The time is 6:30. This is a special closed session of the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. Next is ex parte communications. Does anybody have ex parte communications related to the items on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to public comment on closed session items. I don't see any members of the public in the room, so I will close public comment. Next, we have the closed session. So items 5.1 inclusive of 5.1.1 through 5.1.8 and 5.2 through 5.3 will be taken to closed session. The time is 6:31.
Recording stopped.
The time is 6:45.
Recording in progress.
The time is 6:45. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report from the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. There was no reportable action taken in closed session today.
Thank you. The time is 6:46. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:46. This is a special study session for the City of Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
Motion to approve a final agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Do we have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing no members of the public in the room, we'll move to 6.1, the study session for the Little Libraries Program. Welcome, Josie.
Hello. Hi. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Josie Arons, Management Analyst in Public Works, and I'll be leading you through the study session tonight about little libraries. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So just a little background on Little Free Libraries. Little Free Libraries is a nonprofit organization based in St. Paul, Minnesota, whose mission is to be a catalyst for building community, inspiring readers, and expanding book access across a global network of volunteer-led Little Free Library Book Exchange boxes. Probably know what these are, but that's a little description from the organization itself. So currently, in Emeryville, there is no formal process, permit, or program for the installation of small book boxes or little libraries in the public right-of-way, although there are at least seven Little Free Libraries in Emeryville, according to the organization's website. One of these seven Little Libraries is in the public right-of-way, and the remainder are on private property. So what this shows us is that the Emeryville community has already demonstrated an interest in little libraries, but the city has not required to date a permit for little libraries to be installed in the public right-of-way. So we're here today to find a process for little libraries to be installed in Emeryville in the public right-of-way, and this program would not apply to libraries installed on private property. So a big takeaway just at the beginning is to say that this is a program that brings a lot of joy and happiness to Emeryville residents and visitors, and we don't want the process to suffocate this cool thing too much. So next slide, I'll share a little bit about what other cities in the Bay Area do. San Francisco, a much larger jurisdiction, has a robust, broad program that encompasses many different kinds of projects in the public right-of-way. This was a huge update to their municipal code through a program called Love Our Neighborhoods. And so projects under that ordinance in San Francisco for little libraries are regulated as minor encroachments, which the Director of Public Works can approve. More comparable smaller cities in the East Bay, I reached out to a number of them. El Cerrito, for example, does not have a policy, as most little libraries are installed without a permit, and the city does not take any code enforcement action on them. In Albany, they shared that any permanent encroachments in the public right-of-way require a permit, and so staff recommend that little libraries are installed on private And so now I'll dive into one of the options that we outlined in the staff report. Thank you. So this is option two in the staff report. This is the staff's recommendation, is to establish a city program. And so what we would do establishing a city program would be a resolution by the city council, and it would not require any changes to the municipal code, and it would not require a permit for someone who would like to install one of these. Based on the Emeryville Municipal Code, city projects in the public right-of-way are not subject to encroachment permit process, and the city council, you all have this authority to make little libraries a city program under the council's police power. So our suggestion would be that applicants would submit an application to the city if the little library complies with the applicable city requirements, and then the Director of Public Works or the code enforcement officer or other designated person can approve and impose any additional conditions. This recommendation keeps the program informal, and from the staff perspective reduces the amount of procedure, and will encourage the program to grow. The next slide, I know it has a lot of text on it, but this is our proposed program requirement, of course looking for your input and any additions. So a program requirement would be that the applicant would need the approval of the adjacent property owner and the two neighboring property owners. And so if the little library is in front of one property, it would need that property owner's permission, as well as the two next door. We would also like the applicant to submit a site sketch to show the location of the little library. This doesn't need to be super formal, it can be a Google Map screenshot, but just to show where in the public right-of-way and what height the little library would be. For the location of the little library, it would be required to not obstruct or block the free flow of vehicles, bicycle, or pedestrian traffic or movement, and to not obstruct access aisles or paths utilized by persons in wheelchairs or for ADA accessibility reasons. The library structure itself should be based on the parameters we have here. They come in all different shapes and sizes, but it's pretty standard to have the depth be no more than 18 inches. And importantly, as shown in this photo, we would want the little library to be anchored with a stand or post directly into the ground, and not attached to other objects in the And then for enforcement, our recommendation is that if a complaint is received by the city about a little free library in the public right-of-way, the applicant would need to show proof of approved city application. If the little free library impedes the flow of pedestrian, bicycle, or driver movement, the applicant may receive a notice of removal, and you all as a city council can delegate authority to the city manager to make changes to the program. And I believe that is it from... Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more slide. So there are a few other options we considered. One of them was outlined in the staff report. That option, option one in the staff report, was to update the municipal code. This path forward would require more staff time on the front end to go through the code, come up with very specific definitions of little free libraries, go through the process of changing the code, and then that would be sort of set in concrete. And if we wanted to make other changes to the program, it would require that same level of staff time to make those changes. This potentially could also have a higher cost for applicants if they need to pay the encroachment fee and receive a permit for that. Another option that we also considered is having proposed guidelines available so that anyone who's looking to do this could follow the guidelines online. There would be no application, and the program would be entirely complaint-based. In talking with staff, we had concerns that this may take more staff time on the back end doing enforcement around complaints, and that if the city is only interacting with residents after there's been a complaint, instead of interacting with staff on the front end, it could be a little more challenging. We basically might not be on the best, not have the best vibes with the resident or the constituent that is wanting to have a little free library, wanting to be part of this program, if all that they're seeing is the sort of negative reaction of staff on the back end around enforcement, rather than coming forward to staff on the front end, starting the interaction off on a more positive note. But with that, I'll end and open it up for questions and comments, and looking forward to hearing what you would like to do to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie. Any questions from council? Member Welch?
Hi, Josie. Real quick, I just want to thank staff for all their work on this. This is something that was brought to us by community members that want us to continue the little library program, and we're excited that we're here having this study session so we can move forward with making sure this is a resource that stays available in the community. Was there a discussion around requiring that the little library only be used for library books? So no postings, no announcements? It is utilized as just a space for books only?
We did discuss a little bit that the applicant or the sponsor of the library would be responsible for its content, but we did not have a specific discussion around that content being limited only to books.
Okay.
And so if that is of interest, you can add that in as a requirement of the program.
Okay. Thank you. That was my one question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other comments? Other comments? Member Solomon?
Thank you, Josie. In the staff report, you mentioned that of the little libraries in the city, only one is in the public right-of-way. So just to confirm that this program, if adopted and developed, would only apply to the public right-of-way, and little libraries that are set up in private property, no one would need to apply, or there would be no restrictions or anything like that?
Yes, that is correct.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Josie. Thank you to staff for the research and the development of this item. I just... So I like the option two. I want to know if option two is also something that would include all these... Staff proposes the following program required of little libraries installed in public right-of-way, regardless of option one or two. So that means even if they have a little library on the private property, they would have?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch the end of your question.
Let me rephrase it. So whether or not we go with option one or two, I do like option two, because I think it's more streamlined, and the process is simpler for the applicant. So you would have the criteria, including the one that Councilmember Welch proposed of the contents. You would have the criteria whether or not it's in the public right-of-way or on private property, correct?
So this program would only apply to little libraries in the public right-of-way. So we can't dictate what private property owners would do on their own property, although in practice, they're about the same size and shape and function, even if they're on private property. But the parameters and the requirements would just be for ones in the public right-of-way.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that response.
I had one question. The final option at the end that you had, which kind of seemed simple and straightforward, and definitely in line with your comment about trying not to suffocate the little library building too much. The idea that somebody can propose a conforming structure, a little library, and with no application, it just simply checks off the boxes, fits within some defined guidelines, which would be defined anyway, that seems relatively simple. But then you said that you're concerned about the interaction of the... A bad interaction with the city dealing with a complaint. And I'm trying to understand, how does the person who put up the little library, it doesn't seem like they would be dealing with the complaint. It would be the city and the person making the complaint. Did I misunderstand that?
No, I think you're getting the gist of it. I think we had a concern that if there was a complaint and the city approached the sponsor and asked them to remove it or make changes because they didn't follow the recommended guidelines, that that could be potentially a negative interaction, where if we had the city review and application on the front end, we might be able to sort of mitigate that negative interaction, because we would have a discussion based on the parameters and the location ahead of time.
I see. So if the guidelines then are set such that it would be encompassing kind of the typical little libraries that we all see and think are worthwhile in the city, maybe that would be a low probability event?
Yes. The hope would be that we wouldn't have to do an enforcement action, that people would be able to follow the guidelines, and they would be clear. It's just, we're trying to anticipate some unknowns and what an outcome might be, and trying to make sure that we're setting up our residents and constituents for success. So, I mean, we are open to that last option, basically where there's no application, and look to you all for guidance about your preference. And so, yeah, we're open.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, now I'd like to... Oh, Member Pryforce, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Josie. Thank you for your presentation. So I have two concerns. One is, I believe that there is a fee associated with the application?
So currently, there's no application, and there's no fee.
Yes.
There was an administrative fee that was charged for the one that was in the public right-of-way. That was the fee charged for the encroachment permit.
Okay. And how much is that permit?
That was $231.
Okay. So if we are going to move with this program moving forward, I'd like us to explore waiving those fees as a part of our, I guess, fulfilling the promise that I believe it was the Measure J bond wherein we were supposed to have a library in Emeryville, and we never fulfilled that. And so I think this is our way of saying, hey, we never fulfilled that. And I want to stress out that there's a reason why. It's really complicated to have a library in Emeryville, complicated and expensive. But at the same time, we still made a promise to you, the public, and so for us to explore that. The other thing is that we're in a new era of political fervor, excitement, and so...
Sorry, Member Pryforce. This is just for clarifying questions. We'll make comments after public comment.
Yeah. No, no, no. This is a question.
This is a question? Okay, please, go ahead.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry for the confusion. And so, yeah, so we're in a new environment. And so if someone decides that they're going to have a little library that promotes, let's say, trans rights in communities and stories, what do we do in the case of vandalizing? And if there is some sort of violent feedback from the community, is that something that we then pay for, or is it all on the person to repair some vandalism?
Yes, thank you for the question. So at this point, our proposal is that the sponsor or the applicant would be responsible for maintenance of the Little Free Library. So in the unfortunate case that one is vandalized or needs repairs, that would be on the sponsor.
Any other member comment? Okay, now is the time for public comment. Would any members of the public who wish to comment on item 6.1, the Little Libraries Study Session, please come to the podium.
So first off, I'd like to announce to the mayor that this is not a legal meeting right now, because there's no ADA compliance. We're required by the American with Disabilities Act to comply with and have meetings be publicly accessible, and this meeting is not, because the door downstairs, the ADA function does not work. In other words, you press the bar, and the door doesn't open, so the door's closed. If you're in a wheelchair, you're just SOL, you can't come to this meeting. So you can, we can have the meeting, but it's not a Brown Act, it's not certified by the Brown Act, because any votes you make here are not legally binding, because it's not accessible to all, according to the ADA. So it's not a legitimate meeting. It's not an illegal meeting, but it's not a meeting where you can, where any votes made here tonight are not going to be binding legally. So if we want to have legal meetings, and we do, you should fix the door. And then I wanted to say thank you, I mean, welcome to Matthew Solomon, our new council member. Welcome, Matthew, and congratulations on your victory. And then regarding the little libraries, the reason why we have, the reason why this is even being discussed is because of me, because I, two times, I put up a community bulletin board, just like people put up little libraries, I put up a community bulletin board of public space, and two times, the city of Emeryville's taken down my community bulletin board. And so I'm the progenitor for this legislation you're doing here tonight. And so I'll just warn you, to the extent that you do not make sure this new law that you're passing here tonight, to the extent that you don't make it fair and equal, there's going to be hell to pay, because we're going to, you know, it's the 14th Amendment, equal protection clause. We're going to do it correctly.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Would any other members of the public like to make comment? Public comment is now closed. I bring this back to council for deliberation. Members, any comments or discussion? Member Pryforce?
So I am concerned about the vandalizing, and that the little libraries is also an expression, a free speech expression, and that I believe we should continue with the program as is, but as soon as we start dictating what is communicated as a part of that free speech. So for example, if someone decided to have a little library, a little library about the history of the Black Panther Party, and then they decide that to, as they're decorating the little library, the insides will be wallpapered with clippings from historic, refabrications of historic Black Panther newspapers, right? So someone may have an issue with that. What happens when we have someone who decides to now place swastikas on the wallpapers, the insides of the little libraries? And so I think that as we're deciding to delve into this program, that we really look at, how do we avoid hate speech? But at the same time, allow for people to be able to express themselves. And so, really, this is about content control, and I'm looking at little libraries like I would a website. If someone decides to put out a website, what does, what governs websites on the web? Not a whole lot. And so for the public, we have to decide, is this a private matter, or if this is a public matter? If this is in the public right-of-way, then should we be honoring public speech? And if we honor public speech, how do we mitigate anything that can come from hate speech? And so I think that that's something to just be aware of, because the program is wonderful now, but we're in an era where people can exploit the goodwill of the public. And so it's something to be aware of. I prefer that we continue to have this free speech expression, but at the same time, I think that we need to have some sort of controls in order to prevent hate speech that we would have to deal with, because I believe that that was one of the issues that we had in one of our senior homes, where there was a, I believe, a pro queer flyer or advertisement that was placed on one of our bulletin boards, and someone decided to take it down. And I believe that the legal matters of that, the person had to eventually move from the complex or that sort of thing, but then they eventually won legally the case. And so I just don't want us to be caught in that. And so I'm for the little libraries, but for us to approach it carefully, to ensure that we're creating a safer free speech environment in the city. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. Any other comments?
I had a...
Member Welch?
Mr. Kennedy, may I ask you a clarifying legal question? For, it sounds like the majority of the little libraries here in the city are on private property. So therefore, if someone is utilizing the program, the little library's on their private property, so you see them typically in someone's front yard. If someone was to come and then vandalize that in their front yard, that would be considered their property, and therefore, you would be, the person who would potentially be caught could be charged of vandalism of private property, correct?
Correct.
So then we have that protection on that side for the folks who utilizing their own private property to have the little library?
Correct. It would be similar to any other vandalism that would occur on private property.
Okay. So that piece, but are there perhaps protections? Councilmember Pryforce has expressed concerns about free speech. Because it is their private property, they would be able to then put whatever they deem fit in that little library, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when it does come to the private, the public right-of-way, excuse me, the sponsor, is that then deemed their property, even though they've then gotten a permit to then place this little library in the public right-of-way? Is that deemed their property?
It is not. The city could certainly, as part of the program, put guidelines in place for the type of reading content, if that was something that the council wanted to pursue, that would both respect First Amendment rights, but also avoid any issues having to do with prohibited speech. Hate speech is not prohibited speech under the First Amendment jurisprudence, but there are certain types of speech that can be prohibited. And if that's something that the council wanted to include as part of the program, that could certainly be added to the program. But again, the U.S. Supreme Court has not held that hate speech per se is considered, you know, unprotected speech. There is certain guidelines, yelling fire in a crowded room, other types of prohibited speech, where the government can restrict that type of speech, and we can certainly incorporate those requirements as part of any city program.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to clarify. So staff is looking for direction, and several options were provided. Do we have a way of pulling up those options? I think it was one of the slides. I don't know if there was a consolidated slide at the end.
So the second to last slide includes two of the three options. Basically, the two that we didn't highlight. The option that is highlighted in the rest of the presentation is our recommended program. But hopefully, getting that second to last slide back will help outline those two other considerations. Yes. Sorry, the previous one. Yes.
So I have a comment just about this final one, where there's no application. I think there's something Member Pryforce said, I think really rings true, which is we don't want an application fee for this. That would, I think that would inherently discourage somebody who would be otherwise inclined to construct a beautiful, joyful little library. And if we did have a $200-some application fee, who knows how many little libraries we could have that people decided simply not to do, because maybe the application process was too onerous, or the cost was also burdensome. So I think that would be an important consideration. And I think we have it within ourselves to come up with proposed guidelines that would encompass everything that we know and feel is good about little libraries. And, you know, this could be a very simple way to get started with a program, because currently, we don't have a program. And then we can see how that goes. If the, if we start getting a lot of complaints about the libraries that we think are conforming, then the person making the complaints would be informed that they are conforming. If we receive complaints that the little libraries are not conforming, then we can take a look and revisit the approach here. I think it's a relatively low-stakes program. It's something we can start out with the least onerous approach, and that's something that I would like to see. Any other thoughts from council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually would like to see the option two developed. I think it's less onerous on the staff, and it is a better way to promote the community. and it is a better way to promote the community enthusiasm and joy around the little libraries. I do like the idea of waiving the fees because I think that's another way to keep the public goodwill around this item. And based on what city, city attorney has said, perhaps we can explore time, place, and manner restrictions for the public right of way libraries because the private ones already have recourse.
Could we pull up option two to see how that compares to the no application, no fee?
One more.
So there would be an application, but there would just be no fee. Is that correct, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would like to encourage that.
Other member comments? Member Solomon or Pryforce, sorry, you guys are at the same time.
Thank you. I want to agree that option two would be my preference. I think to the extent that we can keep the application simple and straightforward, I, I think waiving a fee would be certainly the most equitable option. But I do think to staff's point that having an opportunity at the start of the process to identify potential issues that could come up. Staff is obviously very familiar with and able to think through all of those potential challenges. You know, the, the first one that comes to mind is, you know, making sure that the little library is not impeding the flow of traffic or pedestrians, bicycles, and is in a space that is going to be safe for people to use. But I do want to make sure that the process is simple, both for the applicant's perspective and from staff's perspective. But to make sure that that conversation is happening earlier is likely to create a better outcome than if it has to, you know, someone has to go through the process of creating this thing, being very excited about it, and then getting a complaint and having to remove it for a reason that could have been identified at the start.
Member Pryforce?
I just want to apologize to the public if I'm seeming a bit of a nanny council member. But if my daughter is going to the junior prom, I want to know everyone who goes into that building. And so every application means we get to identify every, every little library and to make sure that if anyone abuses the program, we know who you are.
It looks like we have three members in favor of an application process, but with a waived or no application fee. I think I have that right. Is that?
You're talking about option two, Mayor?
Option two, yes.
I support option two with the parameters that I mentioned.
Staff, do you have sufficient direction?
Yes. Thank you very much. This is very clear. We will come back to you with a resolution and any other updates to make sure that we're able to establish the city program with application and no fee. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Josie. The time is 7:21. This special session is adjourned. The time is 7:21. This is a special, this is an Emeryville successor agency to the Emeryville redevelopment agency meeting. I'd like to note that all members are still seated. And I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the final agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, it's.
It's aye. Aye, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is ex parte communications. Do we have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, I'll move to public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to make comments on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes.
The mayor should extend the amount of time from two minutes to three minutes because that's traditional in Emeryville. For the first 20 years I was here, it was five minutes. Nora Davis lowered it to three, three minutes, and then John Bouders lowered it to two minutes. There's no reason why it should be two minutes. You should raise it up to three minutes. Okay, so now there's a violation of, Courtney Welsh is violating the, the code of ethics because she's not, her eyes are not meeting mine. Sukdeep Carr is not violating. The mayor is not violating. Councilmember Solomon is not violating and neither. Okay, so it's only Councilmember Welch. And I'll zoom in on her. She's, she's not actively listening to me. But who says she needs to actively listen? The, the city attorney, John Kennedy. He says that, Mr. Kennedy says you're required to actively listen. That's what he said in the staff report in the 20, September 2023 meeting where you, the five council members certified the code of ethics. You're required to actively listen. And furthermore, in the code of ethics, it says what active listening is. And one of the provisions is that your eyes must meet the speakers. Must, you must look at the speaker. So you can see here Courtney Welsh, Councilmember Welsh, is violating the code of ethics right now. And so it's because we trust the city attorney who wrote the code of ethics, that he, that it's a good document. We can see here that the mayor, I mean, Councilmember Welsh is violating it. And so you, we need to do something about it. We can't let these kinds of violations of the code of ethics just go unpunished. I suggest that what we do is we bring her up on charges and have a meeting so we can discuss.
Thank you for your comment.
Sanction and sanction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the comment, or members of the public? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. At this time, I will entertain.
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have action items. We have item 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3. These are relatively routine items. I would be amenable to waiving presentation unless there are members who would like to see a presentation.
I agree to waive.
It looks like we have a consensus to waive presentation.
Would you like a motion on all three together?
Well, at this time, we should take any questions. Do we have any questions for staff on these items? Seeing no questions, I'd like to take public comment on these items together. Do we have any members of the public who would like to make comment on 7.1, 7.2, or 7.3? Please come to the podium. You have two minutes.
Okay, again, I'm speaking, but Councilmember Welch is not actively listening to me. The rest of you are. So just Councilmember Welch is not. So why isn't she reprimanded by her, her colleagues? She, in addition to not actively listening, she's, right now, she's violating the code of ethics. In addition to that, she's, she, on her Twitter site, she called me a fuck boy. And she's called me, after the code of ethics was, was certified by the council, she called me a liar, and she called me a racist and a misogynist. So all those are prohibited expressly by the code of ethics. So says our city attorney, John Kennedy. Expressly, specifically verboten, but she violated. So the, the fact that you're not enforcing our code of ethics, except for only one of you, only, only the unpopular, the progressive council member, which is Councilmember Pryforce, only he is required to obey the code of ethics. So you can see here, Councilmember Welsh is not required. And so that's selective enforcement and it's unethical. So ironically, Mayor Mora, you're being unethical by not holding everyone to account equitably in a fair and equitable manner. You're allowing Ms. Welsh to violate her code of ethics and, and you're disallowing Councilmember Pryforce. So that's selective enforcement. It's, it's unethical and it's, it's actually illegal. So, you know, you, you got to fix this. We have, I've had it and the rest of, a lot of people have had it with cynicism and government. And this is cynical, to allow favorite council members to violate the law and unpopular council members to be, be held to the law. This is in, Mr. Mora, this is in your lap now, that you're responsible now. You got to fix this problem. Equal.
Thank you for your comment.
Enforcement under the law.
Any other members of the public wishing to make comment? Seeing none, we can bring this back for deliberation. Members? I'll entertain a motion for approval of one, two, or three of the resolutions.
I can make a motion to approve 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This meeting is adjourned. This is, the time is 7:29. This is the regular meeting of the city council. I'd like to note that all members are still present. At this time, I'll accept a motion to approve the final agenda.
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor, Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Special orders of the day. Administration of the oath of office to City Manager Latonya Bello. Welcome.
Hi, Latonya.
Hi, bro.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name, do so solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Latonya Bello, do so solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as the city manager for the city of Emeryville.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as the city manager for the city of Emeryville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have announcement of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the council that we have a current recruitment open for several vacant positions across different advisory bodies. That recruitment closes on February the 3rd. Appointments will be made about a month later by the city council and the application is available on our website. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have council members' special announcements and reports on meeting attendance. Members, anything to report? Seeing none. Next, we have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the mayor, council, and members of the public. I am excited to officially begin my journey as your city manager as of January 6th. And I'm currently, of course, getting acclimated to the community, meeting residents, and learning more about the amazing work that is happening across our city. I would like to report out that in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, our TK through eight after-school program at the ECCL engaged in a meaningful activity by creating a I Have a Dream collage. As part of that project, students listened to Dr. King's famous speech and reflected on the important question, what is my dream for myself and my community? Their thoughtful answers inspired the creation of their vision collages which showcase their hopes and aspirations for a brighter future. Thank you so much to our director, Rebecca, for inspiring our students' creativity, thoughtfulness, and optimism. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome officially to the city. Next, we have the public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Any members of the public wishing to make comment? Please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes.
Okay, first, if I wanted to say thank, or welcome to our new city manager, Ms. Bello. And, yeah, and you, I would suggest that you look into re-upping or re, re, bringing back to the fore our previous program that was popular, it was called Coffee with the City Manager. It was a, it was a program whereby the ordinary citizens could come and speak with the most powerful person in Emeryville, which is the city manager. We have a city manager's form of government, and so you're the most powerful person in our town. But I like the idea, and it has been done in the past, where this average people can actually talk with you in, in, you know, in a regularly scheduled time. And we had that for many years, decades, until it was stopped by the previous city manager. And I, I think you should look into re, re-bringing that back up once a month, perhaps. Maybe every two weeks, leave it up to you. But that would be, it would go a long way towards, you know, encouraging citizen engagement and the public engaging with their, their local government. I hope you look into it. Thank you. So now I wanted to say, here's what the mayor signed on December 3rd, 2024. Whereas despite his many public statements calling for a code of ethics, Councilmember Pryforce is the only member who has not signed the attestation that he will abide by the code, code of ethics, despite voting in favor of the code's adoption. And with, because of that, Mayor Mora and Councilmember Welch and Councilmember Carr censured and sanctioned him. So what, that was unethical, what you did, and actually probably illegal because you censured and sanctioned your colleague for his vote. Every vote that the five of you take, you can, it comes with, with three choices. You can vote yes, you can vote no, or you can vote abstain. Councilmember Pryforce abstained.
Thank you for your comment.
And you punished him for it. And Councilmember Welch is not.
Thank you for your comment.
And got actively listening right now.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent items. Do we have a motion on the consent items? Or to move, remove any? Yes?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I have an amendment to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor Carr, on item 10.7, actually submitted a, a different order of her appointees for the standby officers. So I just wanted to read those out loud. The standby officers are staying the same. They're just going in a different order for her. So the first one is Julia Clayton, second one is Scott Donahue, and the third is Diane Martinez. And I apologize for missing that, Vice Mayor Carr. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. I appreciate making the correction. And with that, I can move, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Murrah.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 11.1 is a public hearing. I'd like to, the time is 7:37. I'd like to open the public hearing for the resolution of the City Council of Emeryville granting an annual card room license to the Oaks Card Club for the calendar year 2025. Do we have a staff presentation?
I do not think that there's a presentation tonight for that item, Mayor.
Do we have any questions from the council on the attached staff report, which was sent out beforehand? I'd like to note that this is a relatively routine item. I see no questions. Do we have any members of the public wishing to make public comment on the card room license?
Fran Quittell, I serve on the Budget Advisory Committee. This is a wonderful contributor to our city in terms of sales tax, and we love having the card room in Emeryville, and I fully support renewing their license. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Any other members of the public? You have two minutes.
Okay, so I, first of all, Ms. Welch is not actively listening to me. The rest of, Mr. Solomon, okay, he is now. That's good. It's only Ms. Welch that never actively listens to certain speakers, and constantly violating the code of ethics. Okay, I don't, I don't, I think gambling is a bad idea, and it's, it's, it sends a message, I mean, first of all, there's gambling addiction, and, which is a pernicious social ill, and it sends a message that, you know, the get-rich-quick kind of idea, and it's just sort of damaging to the society as a whole. And that's the guy that runs it, Mr. Tibbetts, is like pulling like millions of dollars a year out of our community. He can't bring himself, or even one of his representatives, to come here tonight before us to ask for this. I think you got to say no. He can't even be bothered to come here. He disrespects us to such an extreme degree, he can't, he won't even come here before you to make this simple request. I think you got to call him up in front of the whole community and have him explain why he wants this favor granted to him by the people. The fact that he's not here tonight, that should be alarming to the five of you, and that should, you should not necessarily say no, but you should redo this for a future meeting, and then tell him you expect him to show up. And then, if he doesn't, then you could say no to him. But it's just very insulting to the people of Emeryville that he can't be here tonight, or will not be bothered to even to come here tonight to ask for this. He just expects the five of you to just, every time to rubber stamp, and it's embarrassing, frankly, if not more adjectives. But, so I suggest you notify him, Mr. Tibbetts, or one of his representatives, to actually show up at the meeting, and then you can discuss it.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, I'll move to council deliberation. Members? Member Pryforce.
So I know that the card room is, it's routine, that the license is renewed. There are several economic drivers in Emeryville that could be considered adult, namely our gambling casino industry and our cannabis industry. And I believe that one, if our only now still, a cannabis dispensary, that there was a crime that occurred at that facility. And so, the card room, the area around the card room also has, I believe, a liquor store near there. There was a ramming, but I believe that that was accidental. But it does tend to be a very hot spot for activity, and I don't want to place that on the card room, but the reason why I'm mentioning this is because Jeff Jennings, the chief of our police department, he did review this with us. And so, anyone who is interested in learning more about the public safety issues around the card room, they can look into the staff reports, and if they have any questions, they can talk to us and talk to Chief Jennings. But this was approved by our Chief of Police, and that we believe that issuing this card license, I mean, this license would be, this license would be, it's safe, and it's not dangerous to our city. So, and I think anything related to these industries, even though they may be routine, it's always a good idea just to take a little look into what's going on, but it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. Other comments? Number Welch.
Motion to approve the resolution. I think this is a public hearing? Or do we need, is this?
Yes, it is.
All right. I will second approving the draft resolution to renew the license of Oak Card Club.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Murrah.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This closes the public hearing. Next, we have action items, starting with 12.1, the Fiscal Year 2024 Affordable Housing Expenditure Plan and Program Annual Report. Welcome, Valerie.
Hi, good evening. My name is Valerie Bernardo. I'm the Housing Coordinator here at the City of Emeryville, and I'm here tonight to present to you our annual report for fiscal year 24. The annual report is actually three annual reports in one. It's going to be our Affordable Housing Expenditure Plan, our Measure C Housing Bond, and also our Affordable Housing Program that's a part of our planning regulations. Next slide. So as I mentioned, it is three reports in one. The Affordable Housing Expenditure Plan Annual Report details our funding allocation and our expenditures that we've had. There's an updated expenditure schedule within the report, and there's also an overall update on our program statuses and our performance measures. The second report I'll go into is our Measure C Housing Bond Annual Report. We'll talk about those funding allocations and expenditures, and also our social impact reporting. And then the third is our Affordable Housing Program Annual Report that comes from our planning regulations. There, we'll go into our BMR rental portfolio and our BMR home ownership portfolio. So I did just want to start off by saying that these are three annual reports that's going to be provided together. There are other housing annual reports that I will come back to you and provide, but these three reports specifically relate to the guidelines and the requirements that are in either our planning regulations, that are part of the housing bond requirement, or that are part of the expenditure plan. So this is not encompassing all of the housing work that the City of Emeryville does, but it does focus on the requirements that are outlined in each one of those three components. So next slide. So we're going to start with our Affordable Housing Expenditure Plan, which was adopted in February of 2021 under Resolution 21-13. That plan provided for the implementation of how the city was going to move forward in expending approximately $64 million in housing financial resources. The primary source of those financial resources was our Measure C Housing Bond, which was $50 million. But there was also funding that was available from our Affordable Housing Impact Fees, our Affordable Housing Fund, our Low Mod Income Housing Asset Fund, as well as an allocation of A1 bonds that the city received from Alameda County. We also outlined how we're going to expend those funds, so there's an allocation of funding dedicated to a variety of programs, and also a plan for how those funds would be expended. The primary purpose of that expenditure schedule was based off of the fact that we did have Measure C housing funds that were going to be provided. There is a requirement determining on how those bonds were going to be issued, as to whether or not those funds would be, have a certain expenditure requirement. Originally, we went through the process thinking we were going to issue tax, I'm sorry, non-taxable bonds, which would have required us to have a three-year expenditure, three years to commit, I'm sorry, three years to expend 85% of the funds, five years to expend 100% of the funds. So we developed a schedule as to how we would do, put the funds out over a seven-year timeframe. That didn't happen, and I'll go into a little bit more about that later, which is why there's a revised schedule. Again, we have our overview of our seven programs that fall either under production of affordable housing or preservation of housing, and we have our performance measurements. One of the things that we've done in this report is we've also added some additional funds that we've received, which was $575,000 that came to the city in 2023 through our Pro Housing Implementation Pilot Program. Those funds are being dedicated to do an accessibility program, so we're also referencing that in this expenditure plan. So, when it comes to our housing plan, again, I mentioned there was originally $64 million, with the additional $575, we're up to $65 million. We've expended 24% of those funds at the end of fiscal year 24, which would have been June of 2024, so roughly about $15.6 million. The largest bulk of those expenditures are coming under our rental production program, about $14 million. We've expended almost 100% of our bond issuance fees at $745,000. We don't anticipate any additional expenditures coming forward because we've already sold the bonds. So we have a little budget allocation that's available there that can be reallocated to another funding source. Under administration, we've only spent about $41,000 in administration funds, so we have quite a bit of those resources left. And then we've spent a little over, almost half of the funding, $700,000, towards BMR acquisition program. That's where our expenditures have been for the last three years, from when the point that the housing plan was adopted. Next slide. So I talked about we did an amended schedule on the, and you can't see it unfortunately right now because it's a little bit too big, but there is a legend that identifies the difference between the green and the blue portions of the chart. The green is what was in our original plan, so what our schedule was for how we were going to expend all our funds was in green. The blue is the revised. So you'll see, there is a shortened timeline for a variety of programs. Again, our original plan was that the funding would be issued over two tranches, taking about seven to eight years. Because we are not having to do two tranches, the money is all available today, so we're able to move forward on some of our programs a little bit faster, and potentially expend the money a little bit faster. This has also given us an ability to also kind of recalibrate based on our capacity, what programs we think we can get out quicker, where the need is, and what things we might want to push off a little, until a little bit later. So you'll see the majority of the projects or, and programs, look like they're going to have expenditures between '24 and 2026. Next slide. So, under our preservation programs, there are five different programs. We've had implementation activities that have occurred on three. The first one is our BMR Acquisition Program. That program is identified to go and acquire BMR ownership units that are at risk of being lost to the city, so no longer part of our portfolio. We've allocated $1.5 million to that program. We've expended 44% of it. We've done, over the past two years, we've acquired two properties, both of those being at Emeryville Warehouse Lofts. Both of those properties were acquired from the owners and then resold to income-eligible homeowners. Our second program is our Home Ownership Assistance Program. In, I believe it was May of 2024, the City Council adopted the revised guidelines for our Home Ownership Assistance Program, which is called First Home Emeryville. There's $1.9 million allocated to that program. We did not expend any money in fiscal year 24, but the program was launched in fiscal year 25, and we had over 200 applicants to our lottery for the program, and we have already held our lottery. This is the information that'll show next report, but I just wanted to go ahead and provide it today. We've already held the lottery, and we are going through the batch of applicants we had there, and we've already approved several people who are currently in the process of looking for a home in Emeryville. So we do think that the revised program guidelines will be successful, and the funds will move very quickly. And then our new program through the Pro Housing Funds is our Accessibility Improvement Program. There's $575,000 allocated to that program. Those funds are going to be utilized to make accessibility improvements to individual units or to common areas in homeowners, in condominium developments, or in multifamily properties. We did not expend any money as of the end of fiscal year 24, but the guidelines were adopted, and that program did launch in fiscal year 25. And we currently have six applicants that we're working on moving forward under this program. Next slide. Under our production program, this is our rental production program, we have funding that's been reserved for three specific projects. The first one was Nelly Hen and Gateway. It had about a $16 million allocation. 84% of those funds have been expended. That project is currently under construction. You can see it going up right now. That project will produce 90 units. All of those units will be set aside to 20% to 60% of the area median income. And what we really like about this project is that 45, so half of the units are going to be set aside for our special needs population. Primarily, that'll be our formerly homeless population. They'll have a location to live in. Our second project is 4300 San Pablo Avenue. There's $2.5 million allocated to this project through the A1 bond that the city received through the Alameda County. 0% of those funds have been expended. That project is currently in pre-development. They're seeking additional financing in order to move that project forward. Once that project is developed, it will create 68 units of affordable housing, all for households between 20% and 50% of the area median income, and all of those units are going to be set aside for seniors and transitional age youth. So this will be one of the first intergenerational housing projects we have in the state. And then our third project is our perennial apartments. Look, previously, the Christie Avenue sites is what it's been referred to in other presentations. We allocated $23.6 million to that project. We've expended zero. That project did execute its land, its lease disposition and development agreement with the city in 2024, so it's currently in the pre-development stage. We are waiting for the entitlements to be issued, which should be any day soon. That project will build three phases of development, so three separate buildings totaling 362 units of affordable housing, and all of those units will be set aside for households between 20% and 60% of AMI. Next slide. So overall, we did, in our plan, identify certain performance measures. We have produced 14% of the units that have been produced, 14% have come from production. The remaining units to be produced are 85.3%, so we do have quite a bit of ways to go, but we are in the early stages. When it comes to the expenditure of our funding, we have expended all of the Low Mod Income Housing Asset Funds that were allocated in the plan. Over 60% of the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Funds have been expended, and over almost 90% of the Affordable Housing Funds have been expended. We haven't spent any of the A1 bond funding. All of that is strictly allocated to 4300 San Pablo, and we have not spent any of the Pro Housing funding. When it comes to our targeting related to the units that will be produced through these financial resources, we've reached 16% of our goal for our very low-income unit targeting, 25% of our goal for our 51% to 80% targeting, and 1% of our goal for our moderate-income units. Next slide. So the next report will be on our Measure C Housing Bond. The purpose of the Measure C Housing Bond was very specific. Those funds can only be used to either enhance through the acquisition or physical improvement of real property, and that real property has to be used for the production of affordable housing. The funding also has very specific The funding also has very specific uses. We can do acquisition rehabilitation. We can add additional affordability commitments to some of our mixed-income projects. We can help our low and middle-income households purchase homes. We can ensure that none of our homeowners are displaced, so displacement prevention. We can also do permanent supportive housing for those who are experiencing homelessness. Within the Measure C bond, there are some requirements, such as an accountability measures. The accountability measures are threefold. The first one is there is a bond oversight committee made up of the Budget Advisory Committee. They actually did review the Measure C annual report and did provide a recommendation on that to the city council. Their role is to actually do financial oversight of the Measure C housing bonds. The second accountability measure is our housing committee. That housing committee is responsible for approving or making a recommendation to our program guidelines, as well as making funding recommendations to specific projects. And then our third is the annual report, which is what we're doing today. The annual report is a requirement within the California Government Code. It's under Section fifty-three, four, ten, that requires the city to actually file an annual report related to the bonds, and that's what we're doing through this report. Next slide. So just a little background on the timeline for Measure C housing bonds. It was originally authorized to be put on the ballot back in March of two thousand and eighteen, and then went to the voters for a vote in June of two thousand and eighteen, where over sixty-six percent of the voters did approve the issuance of this fifty million dollar bond. The housing plan, administration, and expenditure plan was adopted by the council in March of two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and twenty-three, February, the city council did authorize the sale of that fifty million dollar bond under one issuance. And then in May of two thousand and twenty-three, the city sold those fifty million dollar bonds as federally taxable social bonds. Next slide. So as a part of our reporting for Measure C, we have our specific budget just related to that fifty million dollar allocation. We have all the same programs, BMR acquisition, homebuyer assistance, foreclosure assistance, rental preservation, special needs housing, rental production, development opportunities. And then, of course, there's funding that was allocated to the cost of issuance and admin. All of those, thank you, all of those are still within the budget, within the program for fiscal year twenty-three, because we actually did not present a annual report that year. The city expended seven hundred and forty-five thousand. That was all related to the cost of issuance, because those bonds were sold in May. The fiscal year ended in June. That's the only activity that occurred there. For fiscal year twenty-four, we expended three point eight million dollars. The largest allocation of that, those funds, went to the rental production. So we have about forty-five million dollars remaining out of our Measure C. Next slide. I mentioned previously that when the city decided to sell the bonds, we actually sold them as taxable social bonds. With social bonds, there is an impact reporting that is required. As a part of that impact reporting, we have to identify how the proceeds from the bonds are going to be used, how the projects are being evaluated, how we're going to manage the proceeds, and then specific reporting. And all of that is related to social bond principles, and there's a guideline for how the investor will actually do the report. So we're providing that information in this annual report that will also go back to the purchaser of the bonds. So for expenditures for fiscal year twenty-four, we had expenditures under two projects. That was Nellie Henning Gateway and our Warehouse Lofts. That was our BMR acquisition program where we acquired and sold two units. That relates back to social development goal eleven point one, which is affordable quality housing. Our income targeting for Nellie Henning Gateway was twenty to sixty percent of AMI for a formerly homeless special needs population. For Emery Warehouse Lofts, those units were targeted to households at a hundred and twenty percent, and the special needs target is for underserved, those who may have a challenge in finding affordable homeownership opportunities. A hundred percent of our allocation for the Emery Warehouse Lofts went to, came from Measure C to do that acquisition holding cost. Twenty-two percent of the share of expenditures we've had for Nellie Henning Gateway come from our Measure C. Nellie Henning Gateway will have a ninety-nine-year financial life. That is the length of our loan and our Affordable Housing Agreement. Again, it'll produce eighty-nine affordable units. It is estimated that we'll have a minimum of a hundred and seventy-eight people that will be served based on the mix of bedroom sizes, and those hundred and seventy-eight people, based on those eighty-nine units, will receive a savings of what rent is to what they'll actually be paying for their affordable unit. Under those two units that we sold for Emery Warehouse Lofts, only one of them was using Measure C housing bond. That person who bought that one unit was a household of three, so three people were housed, and there was a two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar savings for the purchase of that unit based on what other units in that building would have gone for if they were on the open market. So that's the client savings premium. Next slide. My last report is on our Affordable Housing Program. The Affordable Housing Program was adopted in two thousand and fourteen under Ordinance fourteen dash zero zero nine. It previously was called the Affordable Housing Set Aside Program, and it was re-chapered and re-adopted in two thousand and fourteen. So it did exist prior to that under a different name and under a different part of our planning regulations. You can find it in our municipal code under Article Four, Chapter Five, Title Nine. The purpose of the city when they adopted this was to lessen the shortage of affordable housing by ensuring that we had below-market rate or BMR units in all of our residential developments of a certain size, and it also created our Affordable Housing Impact Fee. As a part of this chapter and this section, this article, there is a requirement for an annual report to do an evaluation of the program. It identifies that we are to report on the number of units, the size, tenure type, location, the number of resales, and our vacancy rate, so that we can evaluate the program and ensure that it's meeting the required intent. Next slide. So within this part of the code, there are BMR portfolio, and we have our ownership portfolio. Within our BMR portfolio for rental projects, we have created six hundred and fifty-three rental units. Eighty-nine units are currently under construction, and seventy units are entitled. There's a total of twenty-nine projects, and I say project by meaning affordable housing regulatory agreements. If you take a project like Avalon at Public Market, which the layperson would assume is one project, we actually have two Affordable Housing Agreements because there's two separate buildings, so we count that as two projects. The same thing would be true over at the Emery, which the average person would consider as one project. We actually count as four because each building has its own regulatory agreement and requirement. In order for a unit to be a part of our BMR portfolio, it comes into our portfolio one of four ways. It's either a part of the Affordable Housing Program, so under the planning regulations, it's either received a city loan, it's had of a community development bonus, or it has a state density bonus. If it comes into the city one of those four ways, we consider it a part of our below-market rental program, and all the projects are required to comply with some of the same requirements. When it comes to the project type and unit type, we've created seven hundred family units, two hundred and fifty-seven special need units. We have a hundred and sixty-seven, that should say studios. Did some mistyping there. Three hundred and seventy-eight one bedrooms, three hundred and nine two-bedroom, a hundred and two three-bedrooms. We have seven four-bedroom units, and we have three live-work units within our rental portfolio. Six hundred and three of those units are reserved for very low-income households. A hundred and ninety-seven are low-income, and a hundred and fifty-eight are moderate, and that's encompassing all of the units that are complete, under construction, and entitled. Next slide. So where are the units located? So we actually have units located throughout the city and almost every single neighborhood outside of the Watergate. You'll find some of our rental portfolio, and so this map kind of illustrates that. I would say we have the majority of our units in that San Pablo corridor area, as well as the Powell-Christie Core. Next slide. When it comes to vacancy rates, we have an average of a ten percent vacancy rate for two thousand and twenty-three, and a, we had a thirteen percent vacancy rate for two thousand and twenty-two. All of our below-market rate rental units are required to do an annual report back to the city. So this is the information that was submitted in the two thousand and twenty-four annual reports. It's reporting on the previous year. We did have three properties that did open their waitlist in order to address vacancy issues. One of them was Ambassador Family Housing, Avalon Senior Apartments, and Triangle. Hello Housing is our BMR administrator, so they actually work with all of our rental project, property managers to do training on the requirements in our Affordable Housing Agreement, as well as to ensure that they're submitting the reports. I will say they've done a really good job in making sure everybody submits annual reports to us. When I came about five years ago, annual reports were being submitted very sparingly. So we've actually gotten to a point where every single person submits a report, not necessarily on time, not necessarily with all the correct information, but they have gotten us up to like a ninety percent rate where information is coming in, people are asking questions, so that they're ensuring that everybody is complying with the program. Next slide. Under our BMR ownership projects, we have eighteen homeownership developments within the city. It's created two hundred and thirty-nine ownership units. We currently only have two hundred and thirty-two units remaining today. We've lost seven units. Those units that were lost were either to foreclosure or through an expiring regulatory agreement. All of our regulatory agreements either have between a twenty-five and forty-five-year resale agreement. Most projects today all have a forty-five-year resale restriction agreement, but in early years, there were some projects that did have the twenty-five, and we have lost some units there. When it comes to unit size, five percent of the portfolio is studios, thirty-three percent is one-bedroom, forty-two percent is two-bedroom, three percent is three-bedroom, and sixteen percent are live-work units. Sixty-one percent of those units are for our moderate-income households, twenty-five for low-income, and fourteen percent for our very low. We do have very low-income homeownership units. Fourteen percent of the portfolio is. Next slide. When it comes to where our homeownership units are located, they are also scattered throughout the city. Again, we don't have any below-market rate units on the ownership side over at Watergate, but we do have projects scattered throughout the city, but primarily in the Dole community. Next slide. We also do monitoring on our ownership portfolio. The purpose of doing that monitoring is to ensure that our homeowners are continuing to reside in those units as their principal place of residency. The information that we request for them in our annual monitoring does vary from year to year. All of our ownership units are monitored on an annual basis, except for the Artist's Co-op. That's under a different agreement that did not require annual monitoring. Eighty-nine percent of our homeowners were in compliance for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four monitoring cycle, which we're proud to almost hit ninety percent. I think ninety percent is usually what you're trying to get at. We did have seven homeowners, which is about four percent of the portfolio, submit, that didn't respond at all. So seven out of two hundred and thirty-two that didn't respond at all is pretty good. But the other sixteen homeowners, which is about eight percent, they only submitted partial information. So they're not completely out of compliance, but they missed something in what needed to be submitted. I will say the number one thing that came as an issue this year and as a part of what was missing was HOA statements. This was a new request. We have not asked for that in previous years. As I said, we ask for different things every year, so that homeowners who potentially want to defraud the system don't know what we're going to ask and don't set things up. But getting HOA statements was the biggest challenge that we found. A lot of homeowners have no communication with our HOAs and have no idea how to get that information. So we've been doing a lot of handholding, working with a lot of homeowners to reach back out to the HOA, give them the contact information, and that's something Hello Housing is working on, is trying to do more outreach with the HOAs and provide more documentation back to the homeowner, so they know how to do that communication, since this has come up as a continuing issue. Hello Housing also manages the monitoring of our ownership portfolio. That is the end of my presentation of those three annual reports. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. And apologies if this breaks things up. I was just informed that I may have missed the ex parte communications for this agenda, so I just want to quickly jump back over to confirm with members, item eight. Does anybody have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, let's proceed with our current item, twelve point one. Do we have any questions for Valerie?
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Valerie, thank you for the presentation. You always do a great job and explain everything with a lot of detail, and it's very much appreciated. Would like to go back to the slide that says Housing Plan Budget. I'm curious about one of the items on there.
I'll add, it's up at the front. I'll put page numbers next time. There you go. Yes.
I'm looking at Accessibility Improvements, which is the item that has an allocation of five hundred and seventy-five thousand. It says funds expended zero. From what I recall from earlier council meetings, it seemed like we needed to have the applications filed by a certain deadline, and I'm wondering how many applications were filed and why are the funds expended zero? Is this program not popular? If you can provide some information, I would really appreciate that. Thanks.
No, absolutely. So this report is as of fiscal year twenty-four. So this is everything that occurred and expended as of June of two thousand and twenty-four. So there were no expenditures. The guidelines that were adopted by council happened, I believe, in June. The program didn't launch until July, so that's why it says zero. We did open applications under two cycles. The first cycle, we received three applic, we received four applications. One application was denied, I'm sorry, five applications. One application was denied. Those four have been brought back to city council for recommendation and approval to move forward with it. We opened it up a second cycle, and we received two additional applications, and so we're currently working with those. I was hoping to get more applicants than we received, so it's not as popular as I think I was hoping for, or as what the desire has said to be from the community, from the Commission on Aging. There has not been a lot of interest. I'm not quite sure why, but we are moving forward with those four, those six applications. We have two HOAs that have come in for funding. We've had one Affordable Housing project, and then we have three homeowners that we'll be moving forward with. And those funds will show up as expended in next year's annual report.
Can I ask you how much are they totaling to? Is fifteen thousand each for the four?
The single-family, the single individuals, the council actually authorized us to go up to twenty-five thousand, so all three homeowners got twenty-five thousand. And then for, off the top of my head here, so it varies. One project, I think, is getting forty-five thousand, one of the HOAs. Another HOA is getting around four thousand, because that's all they asked for, and then the below-market rate rental project is getting somewhere around thirty-three thousand, and that is what they asked for.
So the total, I'm adding it to be approximately one hundred and forty-two thousand that has been estimated to be expended?
Yeah, we're really close to about fifty percent. I might be slightly off with the forty-five on the one HOA, and I'm going to look to Chad to see if he can recall, but it might be a little, we're somewhere around fifty percent of the funds that have been committed to projects through applications.
So approximately two hundred and fifty thousand has been expended?
Or will be, is reserved for applicants that have submitted applications.
And when will we see that report as to how it has been allocated?
Next year's annual report will show all the expenditures and the, how many people we've served. All of that will be in next year's annual report. I don't know that we have, the other two applications, based on the dollar figure, we won't be coming to council for any authorization, because the authority is actually within the city manager to execute those contracts. So right now, we don't have another plan to come and do an update unless at some point the council wants another update.
So somewhere in the presentation, you said that the funds could be used for another purpose? Is that what's going to happen with the remaining two hundred and fifty thousand? Because I think actually the program is popular, but some people don't know what, what it is going to do for them, so they haven't even done anything about it, especially the aged population. Is there anything we can do to do more outreach, or how are we going to expend those funds to people who need those but don't know about that?
So the Pro So the pro housing funds did have an expenditure deadline. The program has to be completely closed down by June of 2025.
Right.
So we're kind of under a time constraint in order to try to relaunch and get more applicants, since we really didn't get a lot of feedback. I have reached out to the state for two purposes. One, to see if we can get an extension on the deadline, which it's a statutory deadline, so there's not going to be a lot of wiggle room, but I just want to have that conversation. And then the second thing I've asked for them to do is to see whether or not the balance of funds could be reallocated. When we submitted the original application, we actually asked for funding to support two uses. Accessibility was one, but also to do pre-development or to do a, like a reserve for some of our low income multifamily projects that need to do replacements. And so what I've, one of the things that I've asked them, and I'm waiting to have the meeting with them, is to discuss whether or not we can reallocate the balance to some of our low income housing projects that are really struggling right now. They don't have sufficient resources to make improvements on their property that are beyond accessibility. So whether or not we could utilize those funds directly to support a replacement reserve.
Can you specify more about the replacement reserve, what it entails?
Not at this point, because it's just, that's what I'm hoping. So I'm waiting to have the conversation, and then there potentially might have to be a modification of that contract, and we'll come up with what the guidelines are for that. But I don't have that at this point, that I could give you more information. Traditionally, replacement reserves are used to cover long-term maintenance of a property. So when things have a cycle of life, so like you need to replace, you know, your roof every 20 years and your appliances every so many years. A lot of our extremely low income projects are just really struggling. They don't have the reserves in order to make the necessary replacements that the project really needs to continue to be a quality affordable housing project. So potentially, if we can get the money reallocated, that, that would then help shore up some of those projects so that they can be sustainable.
I have another question about the administration fees. Can you detail about, give us a little itemization of what it includes? Because I think a lot of people really, I was, I myself was thinking 2,500, 2,500,400 for just administration. So if you clarify what that entails, I think it just would help people who are watching and people who'd like to have this information.
Sure. So the administration funds would cover potentially staff costs. It also will cover banking fees for administration of the, of the bonds. It covers taxes, consulting costs. So we have not had a lot of administration fees. We don't have a lot of things that are currently hitting that line item, but we allocated enough money or an amount of money that we thought would be sufficient in order to cover expenses for several years. I think we're hoping to increase some of those costs, potentially by bringing on some consultants to help with the administration. Because, as you'll see, there are eight programs up there, and that does take a lot of staff time. So we did have somebody come in temporarily and help us with a couple of things. But if we can bring somebody else in to kind of help move some of these programs along, those funds will be expended a little bit further. I'll also just identify that when we put the budget together, we allocated funding not just to support on the housing side, but also potentially if the finance department wanted to allocate a portion of their time for doing the financial transactions, that was available as well. Legal costs, when we have to have regulatory agreements drafted, when we have to have loan agreements drafted, those kind of funds could also be charged to the administration fund.
And those funds can maybe moved around if, because right now I see only 41,822 expended. And what, from what date to what date? You said this is till the end of 2024, but it involves, what's the beginning?
We adopted the plan in '21. So there were no administrative expenditures that really occurred until 2023, until we sold the bonds. So these have been all expenses that have happened since 2023.
And what is the timeline that you figure this 2,500, 2,500,400 for? 10 years, 20 years?
No, no. The $2.5 million probably would take us till maybe 2028. That's what, that's probably what it would cover.
Till the end of the housing?
Plan, yeah. From when we thought we would expend all the money, correct?
Thank you so much for your patience.
Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Valerie. Any other questions? Since there's no additional questions, we'll now proceed to public comment. Any members of the public who would like to comment on item 12.1, please come to the podium.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I, can I make an announcement, please? The last camera has gone out in the chamber. If I pull the PowerPoint presentation down, you're just going to see a black screen. That's what anybody on the YouTube channel would see. They can still hear us, and anyone watching through Zoom is going to see anything that we're displaying. But I apologize, the fourth camera went out during Valerie's presentation. So other than what we're showing in presentations, people won't be able to see what's going on in the room.
Thanks for letting us know.
Hi, I'm Fran, I'm Fran Quartel. I have a question as to whether in additional, additional considerations for use of this money, if there were low income seniors who were, for example, facing assessments that they couldn't afford, could the money, this is a question to Valerie, could the money be, could they apply for funding? That's one question. And also, is there any, I can talk to you about this offline. There are some community safety organizations. I think Nellie Hannan has a very active community safety organization that's run by the residents. And I'm wondering if there could be any funding for those kinds of things. Those are two additional expenditures that I think might be worthwhile.
Thank you, Fran. Any other members of the public? You have two minutes.
Okay, so that was a Brown Act violation engaged by Councilmember Carr. We're supposed to have clarifying questions, so only not substantive discussion and/or debate, and that's what that was. So you have that after the public comments is when you have the debate and discussion. So what Councilmember Carr was doing was not clarifying questions, that was discussion and debate. So trying to run a better meeting in the future, Mayor Murrah. So I wanted to talk quickly about the housing, Hello Housing and our housing policy and our housing, you know, department here at the city hall. My daughter was getting close to 18 a few years ago, and so she expressed interest in getting her own apartment in Emeryville. So my wife and I asked questions, tried to get questions in writing and in, you know, verbally tried to get questions answered about getting our daughter a BMR unit. And the city of Emeryville steadfastly refused to answer our questions. So I went to the CEO of Hello Housing, and that, and she told me that she had been directed not to answer our questions. It's probably because of who I am. I'm a muckraking journalist, as you, as you know, perhaps Mr. Solomon doesn't know, and then Ms. Bello doesn't know. I'm a muckraking journalist. I do stories, news stories about the city of Emeryville, and a lot of times it's not flattering, so it makes me not popular here. And so that expressed itself in the form of not answering our questions. I had to go to the State of California Housing Authority and threaten to sue. I went to them, then I threatened, had to threaten to sue the city of Emeryville to answer my teenage daughter's questions about housing, getting a BMR housing unit in Emeryville. And it took about a year to get our questions answered. And that's the kind of recalcitrance that, you know, you get in a little podunk city like Emeryville. And, you know, what I expect is a higher level professionalism and, and moving forward.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring this back for deliberation. Members, any discussion? Member Welch?
Valerie, I had a question for you in regards to the public comment we heard from Ms. Quartel. Is for something of that nature to be implemented? For as far as assessment, since it would be a personal one, there's nothing like that. Is it more so that the HOA would have to be able to apply for funding if there was assistance needed for the resident? Or could they potentially be able to apply for it on their own?
So let me answer it a little differently than the way you asked if I could. So could we do a special assessment program? Potentially, yes, we could do that with the affordable housing resources that we have. It's not currently a identified program in the plan. So we would have to take money from one of the other dedicated programs in order to fund an initiative like that or seek additional financing somewhere else. So it is something we could do. We don't have any money because it's not a part of the original program. So the council would have to direct us to reallocate the funds from something else that is in the plan. The city has done a special assessment program in the past. It is many years before I was here, so I don't know a lot about that program. But I have done some research. It is something that has been done before. So potentially, we could put together a program like that again. What I do know is that those funds were used specifically for our BMR homeowners and not for every homeowner in an HOA. So only the BMR homeowners were able to access, I believe, those funds. Or those who had another, if they had a city first time homebuyer loan, I think they may have also had access. But it was not open to the general public of residents within one of our homeownership developments. And it was the individual homeowners who were applying for the loan specifically themselves.
Okay.
And those loans did require repayment.
Okay. Even for even, but they were for BMR homeowners, but even, okay.
They did.
Okay.
As to how the program, from what I've seen, was ran previously.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Pryforce?
I raised my hand quick because I didn't want you to come back. So thank you, Valerie, for your presentation. And, and I didn't have to tease you this time about the graphics. The graphics were great. So according to our housing plan budget, and I don't know if that's something that would be represented here, do we have any, any eviction prevention? Any, which would be, I guess, rental assistance programming anywhere in terms of the city of Emeryville? And how does that relate to my question to what we've done during the pandemic? And just in case there is another pandemic or anything like it, we're in interesting times now. In case there is a, some economic trouble. But do we currently have a plan so that we can dip into some emergency funds or anything and bring something that is already existing administratively?
So we don't currently in this plan have anything related to that? Because the bulk of the money is coming from the Measure C housing bond, the funding has to be put into physical properties. So we actually would be prevented from actually utilizing the money to do like a rental assistance program. I have researched. I wish we could, because it would have been a great thing to build into this program. Unfortunately, it's not allowed. It has to be acquisition or some type of improvement to a physical property and not to an individual. So currently, within the plan, we don't have that. We really have to look at each individual funding resource in order to determine what we could or could not use the funding for. $50 million wouldn't be available. Potentially, we could use maybe another source of funding to determine if we could fund an activity like that. It has not been the practice in the past, and it's not something that we've looked really deep into. We've done some cursory reviews to determine what sources are available. When I look at other jurisdiction, it's primarily federal funds that's used to support rental assistance. And so that would be the need. We'd have to identify the funding source in order to do that. When we did do our tenant protection program and rental assistance during the pandemic, we actually received donated funds from a local business. And so that's what funded that opportunity. So we do currently have it set up that we're ready to act fast if there is another pandemic. We have things that we've already put in place previously that we could reactivate if there was a need. But financial resources is the number one challenge. We would be reliant on funding coming down from the federal government or the state or through some type of philanthropic, philanthropic entity or local business willing to support that initiative again. But that's what we would need is a financial resource to support that type of activity. And I don't believe any of the resources we currently have make that allowance, which is why we haven't done it so far.
Yeah, go ahead.
So when we did the Measure C housing bond, we did not place within its architecture anything around eviction prevention or rental assistance?
It wouldn't be allowed under, when you issue bonds, there's certain federal requirements. It's not an allowable activity. It has to be for real property investments.
Gotcha.
So which is why the tenant protections don't get funded. When you see jurisdictions doing housing bonds, it's not funded under those type of resources.
Gotcha. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Valerie, are you looking for any direction or decision?
No, I'm not. We're actually just filing the report, and I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of all the different activities, especially since we have a new council member. I just wanted to do that presentation for you, since this is our first time doing these annual reports.
Thank you for the presentation and the wonderful work you do.
Thank you.
The council is going to take items 12.2, 12.2.1, 12.2.2, and 12.2.3 together as they all pertain to committee compositions. So first, we have a quick overview or introduction by the city clerk. April?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're looking at council committee reorganization and amendment to the housing committee membership. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution reducing the Public Safety and Community Services Committee meetings to six times per year and allowing the committee members to set their own meeting schedule at their first regular meeting of the year. The second recommendation is to adopt an ordinance to combine the Transportation and Sustainability Committees. That's done by ordinance because the Transportation Committee is created within the municipal code. Third recommendation is to adopt a resolution reducing the number of housing committee members from nine to seven. Little background on the council, city council committees. So these provide a forum for more detailed study and discussion by the council members. Two council members sit on these bodies and they make recommendations to the full council. Those recommendations appear in the staff report as a recommendation from that council committee. The council committees currently meet monthly or quarterly, and they're staffed by the various departments that oversee their topic areas. There's currently five council committees: Budget and Governance, Public Safety, Community Services, Transportation, and Sustainability. We're not recommending any changes tonight to the Budget and Governance Committee. For Public Safety and Community Services, this is addressed in the first resolution in your packet. Both committees currently meet monthly, and the staff recommendation is to reduce the meetings to six times per year, meaning every other month beginning in January. In 2024, the Public Safety Committee only met six times. And in 2024, the Community Services Committee met only three times. We're making these recommendations for staff efficiencies and to reduce the number of meetings that city council members need to attend. We're also recommending that we allow the committee members to choose their own regular meeting schedule at the first meeting. They would have to choose a regular meeting schedule, a regular date and time, but it wouldn't be set by resolution at a council meeting, so that gives the members a little bit more flexibility. For the Transportation and Sustainability, this is the ordinance. So the Transportation Committee was created in 1991. They meet monthly. The Sustainability Committee was created in 2015 by resolution. They meet quarterly. The purview of the committees is similar in that there are similar items presented to both committees, taking both staff and committee time for the similar or the same items. And both are staffed by the Public Works Department. Staff recommends combining the committees. Again, the same reports are often presented to each committee. Again, the same reports are often presented to each committee, and there is significant staff overlap between Public Works and the Community Development Department. Our recommendation is to rename it to the Transportation and Sustainability Committee. And we also recommend a monthly meeting schedule, again, to be determined by the committee members instead of by resolution of the council. For the Housing Committee, this is an advisory body to the council. So, this one is a little bit different. This isn't a council committee. We've had a really hard time between resignations, lack of applications, and just different situations. This is a nine-member body. So, we're recommending reducing it to a, from a nine-member body to seven. The committee hasn't been able to meet since June because of lack of a quorum. And there are currently four vacancies on the Housing Committee. Reducing the number reduces their quorum to a four. And the committee secretary believes that that is a more likely number to be able to reach a quorum. So, again, here are the three staff recommendations for council: the resolution reducing the Public Safety and Community Services Committee meetings to six times per year and allowing the committee members to set their own meeting schedule. Second recommendation is to waive first reading and adopt by title only. The ordinance to combine the Transportation and Sustainability Committees sort of amend Section 4-9.01 of the Emeryville Municipal Code. Then, the third recommendation is to adopt a resolution reducing the number of housing committee members from nine to seven. And that is the end of my presentation. Is it all right if I leave this slide up so we don't have a black screen behind you?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I have some changes and amendments. But first, I would like to know if there are any questions from the members.
I have a question.
Please proceed.
Is there a reason or is there an ordinance or a resolution that indicates we can have only two council members on the five committees that are currently formed?
That would create a quorum issue. So, if you have more than two council members, you would have, on a council committee, you would have a quorum of three. So, you have three council members. You'd have a quorum of three. A majority of the body would be making decisions outside of the city council meeting. So, yes, it can only be two.
Thank you.
Any other members? So, I have a few changes and amendments I'd like to make for the items in question. The first one is to actually not appoint any members to the Community Service Committee. And this would in effect suspend the meetings as we figure out the best form for that committee in the future. It could actually involve a presentation to the entire council. But it would also simplify our task of appointing, having four committees versus with four members. I'd also like to add a whereas and resolved clause to change the name of the Sustainability Committee to Environmental and Sustainability Committee based on the council's consensus to make this change as part of council committee reorganization. Suggested language is whereas the city council desires to change the name of Sustainability Committee to Environmental and Sustainability Committee. Resolve that the city council changes the name of Sustainability Committee to the Environmental and Sustainability Committee. This also means, as the third point, to not adopt the ordinance combining the Transportation and Sustainability Committee. Sustainability would remain as its own entity now as the Environmental and Sustainability Committee. And the fourth item is to adopt the resolution decreasing the number of members on the Housing Committee. And that's unchanged from the recommendation. So, with those changes and amendments, I'd like to now ask for public comment. Any members of the public who wish to comment on the items at hand, please come to the podium.
That was a Brown Act violation, what you just, the mayor just did. It's supposed to be staff presentation. One, two, clarifying questions from the council. Three, public comment. Four, debate and discuss. Five, vote. You just skipped the public, you just did debate and discuss before public comment. That's a Brown Act violation. Then, I wanted to say that there was another Brown Act violation, just happened momentarily ago. When the public speaker came up here during the housing presentation, asked a question, and then Councilmember Welch, who's violating the code of ethics right now by not actively listening to me, when she answered the pub, the public's question, you're only allowed, the Brown Act only provides you can give short, little answers to public questions. You can't have answers that have, or substantial and/or long or lengthy or substantial according to the Brown Act. You just had her questions answered. That was a Brown Act violation. So, look, I think it's fine if you guys answer the public's questions. But now that you've done it for a member of the public, now the onus is on you to apply this new ethos that you've just forwarded. You have to apply it fairly and equitably. So, that means if an unpopular person comes up here and asks a question, now you're going to have to answer the question like you just did to the popular person who's on a committee. Otherwise, you'd be violating the Fourteenth Amendment. So, remember, fair and equal treatment under the law. So, if this, that speaker got her questions answered, so then can anybody get their questions answered moving forward? See the problem? You're not going to like it, but you're going to be, you're required by the Fourteenth Amendment to treat everybody fairly and equally. I know you don't like it. So, I could ask a question right now, and you would be, the onus would be on you to have the question answered. Else, you'd be in violation of my rights.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring this back for council discussion. And I just wanted to start out by clarifying the intent of some of my changes and amendments. The idea is to have four committees. It would be Public Safety. It would be Environmental and Sustainability, Transportation and Budget and Governance. And we would be staffing those committees with four eligible members, each serving on two committees. And some of the background on that, the Community Services Committee, it's not to diminish the importance of the Community Services Committee, but rather to think about how to make it more impactful in the future. And one of those possibilities includes a quarterly update to the entire council and also maybe bringing in members of the community who could possibly staff that committee. So, those, that will be a subject of discussion among staff later this year as we decide how to best proceed. And then, the other amendment I made about not adopting the combination of Transportation and Sustainability and instead actually expanding sustainability to environmental and sustainability. The context for that is we're currently in an environmental and sustainability crisis in the state of California. The fires in Los Angeles, I think, highlight the importance of a robust climate preparation and mitigation approach and having a city that operates in a sustainable way. So, I think in the context of that, I think the importance of this committee is underscored, and I would like to see it continue and expanded. With that explanation about my changes and amendments, I will, let's open this up for further discussion. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the amendments that you just made. I do not, the, I'm, this is a question for the city attorney. Do they have to be approved by the council? Because it sounded to me like one of them, and at one point, you said that this is a council action. So, don't we have to take a vote if what you're doing is council action? Because I'm part of the council.
Yes. So, we would be voting on the amendments as well.
So, we are voting on the original items and the amendments? Or, I'm just asking the city attorney to clarify.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. My recommendation is you can handle it a number of ways. You can have a motion to approve all of the amendments that Mayor Mora suggested. Or you can have separate motions for each of the items and ask the council to approve those amendments by motion.
Thank you, city attorney. I think I would like to go back to the original items and discuss those before I discuss the amendments.
That's fine.
Okay. So, with regard to the first item, I actually like the fact that there are two council members on the Community Service Committee, meeting six times per year. And then, I like that we can adopt a resolution reducing the Public Safety and Community Services Committee meetings to six times and allowing the committee members to set their own meeting schedule. It allows the council members to participate in both the Public Safety and Community Services Committee. So, I would actually be in favor of this resolution, provided that we can have the two council members serve on this committee. Regarding the second part, I have been, I have sat on both the Transportation and Sustainability Committees. I sit, currently, I sit on both of those. I serve there, and I've witnessed that they have similar purviews, same reports and recommendations. They're often presented to each committee individually. Therefore, for operational efficiencies and for optimizing our limited staff time, I support the combining of the Transportation Committee and the Sustainability Committee and that they may meet every month instead of the Sustainability Committee meeting every quarter. I believe it meets every quarter, and Transportation meets every month. And that would actually promote operational efficiencies and a better use of staff time. I don't see that we are going to have any federal funds, at least in the next four years, for climate-related issues. So, I think that it makes sense to combine Transportation and Sustainability Committee. I sit on the EVA Board, which has a lot of transportation issues around EVs. So, I think that it makes sense to combine those two committees. Also, a lot of sustainability issues are related to public works and transportation issues that I've worked on for the last two years as a council member on local and regional bodies. And it makes sense to combine the two committees. I would propose that the committee, well, since we kind of have three council members, we could have an alternate council member if that is possible. Maybe the city attorney can answer that.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Is your question whether there can be alternate members that serve on one committee?
In case one is not able to attend one of the monthly meetings.
I don't think that that would be an issue with the Brown Act if that was something that the council was interested in pursuing. So, if one member were not able to attend a meeting and notified the committee members in advance, an alternate member could serve in that capacity.
Member Welch?
Mr. Kennedy, can I just flag something? Just as far as the Brown Act, obviously, they're not attending together. But then, any information that was discussed at the meeting then wouldn't be provided to the main sitting council member, right? Because the three parties couldn't discuss because that would be a Brown Act violation.
Correct. That would be a Brown Act violation, but these meetings are public.
Right.
So, that third member who was not able to attend could watch the meeting.
Right.
But there would be no internal discussion outside of that meeting regarding the agenda items.
Okay.
Because is it, can I, can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Yes.
So, the council members who sit on each committee cannot discuss, they can't have a caucus because they sit on the committees, correct?
There couldn't be a quorum of the three, the two regular meetings and the alternate regarding committee business that takes place outside of the committee meeting. And if the alternate member is not attending that committee meeting, there shouldn't be any discussion with that alternate member regarding that committee meeting.
Thank you. I just.
Other than the fact that one council member cannot attend attendance issues.
I appreciate that. And also, just to continue on that line of thought, that alternate council member would have access to the earlier minutes for continuity?
Certainly, any public documents that had to do with the committee could be provided, the minutes, the agenda, the staff reports, anything that's published by the city in advance of the committee certainly could be reviewed.
Also, one of the questions, this is a logistical question. It's, it mentioned in the documents that we have or the presentation that it's too late to have a January meeting sometimes, especially in the election year. But it seems to me like what we've been doing in the past is where we have the committee membership decided for the one-year term in December. It actually works better because we are almost at the end of January now, and we haven't had the first committee meeting. There are only 10 days left. We won't be able to notice a first committee meeting. So, would it make sense to have these calendared in February? Or would it be better to just go the original way of doing it where we have a December meeting, decide the committees, or unless we can have these before January 15th? So, we have ample time to do the January meeting. Just a logistical question.
Mayor, is it all right if I answer?
Yes.
Thank you. So, this would be the first year that we are making these assignments in January. Part of the reason is that the, in election years, it's certified so late now because the registrar takes the 30 days, that the first meeting that a new council member is sitting at, they're asked to sit down and make selections for their committees and their regional bodies. So, part of our recommendation is to move these assignments to the first meeting in January. So, the, whoever is selected tonight would serve through January of next year. So, this, this year is a little bit off. We've lost the month of January. But going forward, we wouldn't do that because the recommendation is that council make appointments in the, the meeting in January. Does that make sense?
I'm trying to make sense of it. If I may, I'd like to ask a follow-up question.
Yes.
Thank you. So, for a year like this, maybe we could have the first meeting in February rather than have the first meeting in March? Or, I'm just trying to make sure that we have the monthly meetings or the quarterly or the meetings every second month?
So, the only meetings that we're suggesting go to this, so the transportation and/or sustainability or whatever way it's, it comes out of this would meet monthly? And then, we're only suggesting that Public Safety and Community Services go to every other month?
I understand, but that still doesn't answer my question regarding whether we can start in February or, because we would start in March.
You, a special meeting could be called for February, yes. That's not, that's not a problem. Once the membership is determined, they could determine a date with staff and call a special meeting and then start their regular meeting schedule in, in March. Yes.
Thank you.
If I could just also follow up on the alternate member idea. I think there might be some just logistical issues that you might want to consider as well. So, if one of the members of the regular committee is not able to attend, maybe a requirement that they provide the committee secretary a week notice that they're not going to be there so that it doesn't turn into a quorum issue and the alternate is informed well in advance that they will need to attend the meeting? Things like that, I think, would help with staff in terms of making sure that the meeting can go forward if a regular committee member cannot attend.
Thank you, city attorney.
Any other comments? I would actually just like to make one comment on some of what was said about the Sustainability Committee. I also serve on the committee. I think there's numerous important issues that are discussed that would not logically fall into transportation, which is already combined from Transportation and Public Works from a few years ago. And I'd like to see those get their, get the proper attention. There was a comment about federal funds. I think with the spec, with the possibility of federal funds drying up, I think it's all the more important to be looking towards regional and state funds to plug that gap. And I think that's another way to help focus the committee. And in terms of the staffing efficiency, I think the staff time is minimal, and I think it would be worthwhile keeping that committee. I think it's becoming clear that we should actually take these items separately. So, I'd actually, since this is my amendment and change, I would like to. So I, I'd actually, since this is my amendment and change, I would like to make a motion to not adopt the ordinance combining Transportation and Sustainability and adding the whereas clauses previously mentioned that would rename Sustainability to Environmental and Sustainability. So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, Member Welch.
So we are not moving forward with the combining Transportation and Sustainability?
It's, it's our choice to decide to combine them or to keep them separate. So my motion is to not adopt the combination of them and also in conjunction with that to rename Sustainability into Environmental and Sustainability.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion?
Can I ask a clarifying question of staff?
Yes.
So want to be mindful of staff's time and staff's ability to do the, get the input that they need to accomplish the goals of the Transportation Committee and the Sustainability Committee. Is it, and not duplicate your time, not duplicate our time and make sure that, you know, we can reach a quorum at every meeting. Is it staff's opinion or recommendation that the, if the meetings were combined, that there would be sufficient time to cover the needs of both the Transportation, what is currently the Transportation Committee and what is currently the Sustainability Committee if they were in a single monthly meeting? I want to make sure that, to address Mayor's, Mayor Mora's point that we're not giving anyone the short shrift.
It is possible that the meetings, depending on the agenda, could become longer than the average Transportation meeting, and it's possible that they could stay what are, at our current average. It would vary depending on the agenda. Yeah.
So again, my motion is to retain Sustainability and call it Sustainability, Environmental and Sustainability, and to not proceed with the combination of Transportation and Sustainability.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
I would like to make a substitute motion before that.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to move to combine the Transportation and Sustainability in order to go ahead and promote operational efficiencies. I would like to make that motion.
I'd like to second that.
We have a motion and a second to combine the Transportation and Sustainability Committees. Madam Clerk, the roll.
On the substitute motion, Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Nay.
Motion carries on the substitute motion.
So with the substitute motion, we will now have a combined Sustainability and Transportation Committee. I'd like to take one of the other items, the adopting the resolution to decrease the number of members on the Housing Committee from nine to seven.
Actually, Mayor.
Oh, Member Pryforce, go ahead.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to still move forward with renaming that committee that was passed during a substitute motion to Transportation and Environmental Sustainability Committee.
Sure, that's fine. Would anybody like to rename that committee? Sounds like you're making an amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually do like that name. I'll second the Transportation and Environmental Sustainability name for a combined, for the combined committee.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
I'm sorry, I need some clarification on what the, what the motion is. So we're.
Just amending it to the name. The name of the combined committee is amended now to Transportation and Environmental Sustainability. Is that correct?
So we've already combined Transportation and Sustainability, so now it would be Transportation and Environmental, it's Environmental Sustainability?
Yeah, environmental is, what would, because you're, you, you were proposing a name change. What would you prefer? Transportation, environmental, and sustainability or Transportation, environmental?
Well, I think now that it's, so I had previously proposed having Sustainability as Environmental and Sustainability. I think now that it's combined as Transportation and Sustainability, I think it would become unwieldy to make it Transportation and Environmental and Sustainability.
Okay. Then I withdraw my, my motion.
Okay.
I withdraw my second.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
So just to clarify, Mayor Mora, you will be adopting the ordinance then as proposed if the council's desire is to combine the Transportation and Sustainability Committees into one committee?
Oh, that, that's right. So the, the adoption, or my motion to not adopt the ordinance was, that failed, so I think that brings, leaves us with Transportation and Sustainability. So the next item to, to vote on is the resolution decreasing the number of members on the Housing Committee.
I moved to, I moved the resolution reducing the number of Housing Committee members from nine to seven.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor Mora, just one final point. I think the only other item on the list of amendments that you proposed was suspending the meetings for the Community Services Committee for one year and not appointing any members to that committee. Did you want to move forward with that amendment or is that now moot?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Has, has there been vote on adopt a resolution regarding reducing the Public Safety, Community Service meetings to six times per year? Has it, I don't believe that item has yet been addressed.
No, we haven't addressed that, but I think what the city attorney is asking is, since the motivation for the, the action on the Community Services Committee was partly motivated to have four members and four committees, I, I think I would withdraw my, my request to do that.
In that case, I'll move to adopt a resolution reducing the Public Safety and Community Service meetings to six times per year and allowing the committee members to set their own meeting schedule.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, Member Pryforce has his hand raised.
Member Pryforce.
So I'd like to make a, to deliberate on, I disagree about the Public Safety Committee, particularly, meeting six times a year. That you mentioned earlier about the, the fires in California. And so the Public Safety Committee encapsulates as well as a police, but also fire, as well as, and I believe disaster, disaster hazards. And, and I believe in the previous council meeting, we even talked about cyber threats, that cyber threats actually don't, aren't discussed by any of our committees. But it could also exist within the Public Safety Committee as a hazard or a disaster. And so I believe that, that with everything that's gone, everything that's happened in terms of, we experienced a crime surge in the Bay Area, the Public Safety Committee meetings were, were very popular. And, and the committee, the community, I believe, felt safer, better about the Public Safety addressing some of the concerns that would come up in, in public, in terms of our public safety. It was really important to report on the things that were happening in their communities. Even if there was a must, a must delay, still, it was very important. I believe it's, it's vital to our public health as a city, since, as you are, are aware, many of our fire services are used in, for emergency medical. And so I believe that we would be remiss and it would place us in a, in a difficult situation to explain to the public should a disaster or crisis happen, or even something happen as relates to another crime surge. Because as I have mentioned several times tonight, we are in very interesting times now nationally. Then, and the, the last national leadership that we had, actually, by the end of their presidency, was the, was the pandemic, and that's when our crime began to surge, crime rates. And so I believe that the, I, I am protesting the Public Safety Committee meeting, meeting six times a year because when you look at it, hours are important. We use hours to bill wages. We use hours to even determine credits in academic institutions. And so when you think about the average hours of our meetings, which I believe would maybe, let's say, two hours, and you're cutting that by half in terms of how many hours are accumulated during a year, then to say that is six times, six times two, that's 12 hours that we spent a year discussing and going over public safety, that is a lot. And also, I believe that because of the Public Safety Committee, the way that the meetings are run, we go over the stats, it could potentially make the meeting a lot longer. And so if we are going to move it to six times a year, then the meetings would have to be longer. And as well as making room for, of course, public comments in case something happens. And, and there are a lot of people who want to know what's going on and they will tune into the Public Safety Committee. So I, I, I'm not in agreeing, I don't agree with Public Safety Committee meeting six times a year. I think we could potentially be opening ourselves to, to issues in the future.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to ask a question, clarifying question based on what Councilmember Pryforce has just stated. Has, has the Public Safety Committee been meeting every single month in the past year?
They are scheduled to meet every month, I believe, except for August. I may be confusing that. It's 11 or 12 times a year and they met six times last year. Now, I can't tell you the reasons, but they only met six times last year.
Member Welch?
Hey, cool. Madam Clerk, if there's any type of issues, this is just the set regular schedule. There's nothing that goes against the committee deciding they need to call a special meeting, correct?
That is correct.
So this is just, these are the set meetings for, you're only required, I guess, to meet, then it would be six times. But if there's any type of crime surge or issue, we're in the middle of a pandemic that pops out of nowhere, we then could, the members on the committee can always just call a special meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
I actually have a question about this one for the city manager. Did we have any input from Chief Jennings on the modified schedule? So is this a staff recommendation or Lieutenant, Captain Dower, yes? Thank you.
Maybe ask Chief West as well? Chief West is here.
Ah, yes, Chief West.
Thank you. So in with the ACFD, when he was presenting, we didn't have any opposition as well.
Thank you, Chief West. So I believe we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Just a point of clarification. We're going to be voting individually on each of these items, correct? The resolution, the ordinance, and the second, and the third, the second resolution because there is a request to read the ordinance by title only. So we would need a motion that the first reading of the ordinance would be by title only.
Yes, so that's on 12.2.2, right? The second one?
Yes.
Understood. Thank you, City Attorney.
So we're voting on 12.2.1 now, correct? On the resolution for the Public Safety and.
This is on the schedule, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And we do have a council, Vice Mayor Carr and Mayor Mora, we're the first and second on that. Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So next we have the, to waive the first reading and adopt by title only and ordinance to combine the Transportation and Sustainability Committees, amending section 4-9.01 of the Emeryville Municipal Code.
Motion to away first reading and adopt by title only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor Mora, I can now read by title only the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, amending Emeryville Municipal Code, section 4-9.01, to combine the Transportation Committee and the Sustainability, Sustainability Committee with expanded oversight, rename it the Transportation and Sustainability Committee, and delete reference to city staff, sequa determination, not a project, and exempt pursuant to sequa guidelines, section 15378 subsection B subsection 5 and 15061 subsection B subsection 3. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I believe we've covered all the items. Did I miss one?
I don't believe so, Mayor. I think you've covered it.
Yes, I have motions and votes for all of them. Thank you.
Moving on to item 12.3, this is the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, appointing city council members to city council committees for one-year terms and amending the fiscal year 2024, 25, local roster of boards, commissions, and committees accordingly. Is there a associated, there's no presentation, right?
No, Mayor, there's no presentation. We did give you, in front of you, each council member, you'll find the list of the committees. Weren't quite sure if you were going to combine Transportation and Sustainability. So they're listed individually on there, but it's just a reference sheet. I can throw it up on the screen, but it isn't editable. But we just need two members for each of the, of the four committees. Thank you.
Thank you. So maybe a good way to go about this, we can go to each member and ask them for their top two picks. And then we'll just, we can see where we have two people. If we have more than two people. If we have more than two people, we can have some discussion, and then we can approve the committees that way. Maybe I'll start with Member Solomon, what are your two, top two picks?
My top two are Transportation and Sustainability and Public Safety.
Member Welch?
Budget and Governance and Community Services.
Vice Mayor?
My top two picks are Transportation and Sustainability, since I sit on those already and have made contacts in the region. So, I'd like to continue on both of those. And then, I mean, now it's combined to one, so I'd like to continue. And then, the second one is Budget and Governance, since I have a background as an attorney in budget and like governance. Those two are my top two.
And my top two are also Transportation and Sustainability and Budget and Governance. So, we have two committees, Community Services and Public Safety, each with one person in their top two, and then we have two committees with three people. So, we need to get to two people on each committee. Some, oh, yes.
Yeah, we had earlier discussed the alternate option for Transportation and Sustainability, and I would like to continue that discussion, if I may, so that everyone gets an opportunity to serve on those, at least as an alternate, since that is meeting every month, and I think Budget and Governance meets every quarter.
Sorry, could you clarify, which conversation?
About, about having an alternate council member on Transportation and Sustainability in case one of the other council members is absent and can give a notice to...
Mr. City Attorney, what would be involved in that proposal? Or would that be permitted?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. I would like to ask the Transportation and Sustainability Committee Chair if there's any problems, but I think the idea would be that there would be an alternate, that there would be some type of time requirement where a regular member would notify the committee secretary that they're not able to attend, and then the alternate would serve in that capacity if that member were not able to attend a regularly scheduled meeting of the committee. In terms of logistics or other issues that might be problematic, I would defer to Mohammed.
I have no objections at this point to the idea. We would have to have, I'd probably have to go through it with the committee secretary and agree on timelines. In terms of notice, I think that would be the most critical thing. And if, provided there's sufficient notice, we probably can manage.
I think to avoid complicating things as they are, I'd like to first try to resolve who the two members for each committee are, before considering whether to introduce an alternate, which would be a rather new concept. Maybe to get started, I'd like to, let's first take a look, I think we should take the committees one at a time, the ones that have at least three, three people looking to serve. Well, actually, I'd like to open it to, for any further discussion or any comments before I proceed.
I can offer some comments with regard to the first committee, where we have three people, Transportation and Sustainability Committee. I have been sitting on the AC Transit regional body. I serve as an alternate on ACTC, Alameda County Transportation Commission, and I sit on Ava as a vice chair of the Finance Committee on the Energy Board. So, I've been doing that as a council member, representing Emeryville in the whole region. And I made some relationships there that are looking forward to working with me. These are people who had endorsed me when I ran for my reelection. These are people who are looking forward to continuing on with those conversations, and I would like to go ahead and bring that as a contribution to a city, as a, to continue those positive relationships.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, sticking to Transportation and Sustainability, I'll turn to Member Solomon for him to explain his interest and why he should serve on that committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So, professionally, I work at a climate change nonprofit, so I'm very knowledgeable and spend my, my day job thinking about sustainability topics. And I've been serving on Emeryville's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the past three years, including chairing that committee. So, I think I would bring understanding of the topic matter and Emeryville's projects in this area, policies in this area.
Thank you, Member Solomon. And it's just explaining my interest in transportation and sustainability. This is something that's become very close to my heart. I think continuity is, is helpful on this committee, but I think there's more that must be taken into consideration for comprising overall fit for committee members to best serve the city. I think additional service in committees that interface with transportation is important. I previously served on the Planning Commission, which involved interface with transportation, similar to bike pedestrian. I also have experience with alternate transit, which I think is an important perspective as the Transportation Committee considers additional programs. And I've sent a number of future agenda items to that committee, including a Public Works Special Study Session to look at the C Click Fix Program, and also some other bike and pedestrian safety measures that I have some unique insight to as somebody who bikes as their primary mode of transportation. So, that's my, I think we've heard everyone's reasons. What I'd like to do is consider motions for the membership of transportation. And if we appoint two people, then I'd like to see the third person who does not get appointed either select one of the committees with one person. So, it would be Community Services or Public Safety. So, I will, since I'm, since I'd like to join this committee, and I do think the qualifications that Member Solomon brings to the committee with his work experience and his familiarity with alternate transport, I'd like to make a motion to appoint myself and Member Solomon to the Transportation Committee.
Are you saying Transportation and Sustainability Committee?
Transportation and Sustainability.
I have a question before, going forward. So, does that mean that the, the people who are serving on the regional bodies, like AC Transit and Ava and all those committees would, the corresponding regional bodies would go to those two members?
No, those will be discussed separately. And I'd like to note that I, I think you've been doing a great job on Ava. I'd like to see you continue on Ava. And also, I'd like to also know, I think you'd be really good on Budget and Governance, and I would be, if you'd be open to serving and getting breadth of experience, I would appreciate that as well. Member Welch?
I would just like to note, I would like, I would second that. I would enjoy your point of view and your experience on Budget and Governance, and would appreciate if you'd consider joining that committee with me.
That is one of my interests, Councilmember Welch, and I would enjoy working on the Budget and Governance Committee, but at the same time, I do not wish to completely go off the Transportation and Sustainability due to continuity and my own interest there, especially regarding the trees and the environmental issues like Councilmember Mora has talked about.
And... Oh, please proceed.
I definitely understand your concern. I think what's compelling with Member Solomon is that the BPAC does inform the Transportation and Environmental, what are we doing, yep, that committee. I think having that background is really critical, since that is very centralized to Emeryville. I think your work on the regional bodies is, is very prevalent and been very strong, and I, I would definitely support you staying there. I think being, bringing in a, our new council member who has that strong BPAC background, it would be, that work, I feel like you would still be able to perform it at the, at the level you have as well. I think it's, it's about us finding a little bit of a balance. I, like I mentioned, definitely want to welcome you onto the Budget and Governance Committee. Madam Vice Mayor, if you would consider it, I think your voice on the Public Safety Committee would be really critical, with being a Watergate resident, knowing that's one of the areas of concern in the city. I think that's a committee that really would need your voice, and especially the voice of the Watergate community that kind of experiences some of our public safety issues that are really prevalent, car thefts, burglaries, mail theft. I think you serving there would be actually really, really important, if you would consider...
Councilmember Welch, I really appreciate your vote of confidence for those two committees, and trying to convince me to let go of the Transportation and Sustainability for my new council member colleague here, Matthew Solomon, who I have no doubt will do a good job on any one of these committees, as any one of us would do. But just for the sake, I do not mind serving on public safety either, but just for the sake of continuity and the fact that, just like Councilmember Mora, I am also invested in the sustainability aspect of promoting energy and bringing in my relationships there. I would like to continue on it, to your point about the Emeryville Watergate. I live there approximately, I represent about, about 40% or 30% of the population that has concerns about the Marina and the Powell Street projects, that I have been a part of for almost two years, more than two years now, on Transportation and Sustainability. So, I, I do not mind serving on public safety, but that's where my interest lies, is the representation of that population of about Watergate, Powell Street, and, and those places, especially because, as you may read, just the description of the Transportation and Sustainability says, that one of the big parts is the development of the Marina. So, that's my, that's my reason for serving there. I feel I can contribute there the most and most positively.
Thank you, Member Welch, and Vice Mayor Carr. So, we do have a motion and a second.
Mayor Mora, you have not taken public comment, so I think before the vote, you should...
Thank you for clarifying. Before the vote, I'll take public comment. You have two minutes.
Yeah, you should get Councilmember Welch off the Budget and Governance Committee. When she ran for reelection in November, she told the people of Emeryville that she is, was doing a great job with the city's solvency, keeping it solvent. But what we know is that she was hiding information from us, that the city had a ginormous budget deficit, a $12 million budget deficit, the biggest budget deficit we've ever had. She's been on that committee while, so she knew about that budget deficit, and she didn't let anybody know about it. She lied in her campaign literature. So, this is not the kind of person we should have on, on that committee, I think. So, you should get her off of that. We don't want, you know, that level of cynicism on our committees. You know, we're supposed to be about good government, good government. And, you know, it's at least three people here that have expressed interest in good governance, and that is not good governance. Additionally, actually, I forgot my other point. So, just get Councilmember Welch off the Budget, Budget and Governance Committee. She's, she's done a terrible job on there, not transparent, not accountable, and we deserve better.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment? I see no members of the public, so I'll bring it back to the, the discussion. So, I made a motion to appoint myself and Member Solomon to the Transportation and Sustainability, and I'd like to note that if this passes, I will withdraw my name from Budget and Governance and select a different committee. And we have a second from a Member Welch. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay. Oh, I'm sorry, abstain.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Nay.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Vice Mayor, I am open to serving on either Public Safety or Community Services. I'd like to know if you have a preference between those two, and I'll take the other one.
I will take Public Safety.
I'm withdrawing my name from Budget and Governance and adding it to Public Sa, or sorry, to Community Services. And we now have Vice Mayor Carr, we have two people on, on each committee now. Public Safety would be Solomon and Carr. Community Services, Member Welch and myself, and Budget and Governance, Member Welch and Vice Mayor Carr. So, for the remaining three committees, Budget and Governance, Community Services, and Public Safety, I'll entertain a motion to appoint the, the listed members that I mentioned previously.
I will second.
I'll make the motion then, to your second.
Oh. Okay.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
For the appointment of all other committees, Councilmember Pryforce?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The final agenda item is the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, appointing city council representatives to various county, regional, and statewide boards, commissions, and committees for one-year terms, unless otherwise noted. Everybody should have received a copy of the current membership for these bodies, and I think maybe the best way to go through, oh, thank you, Madam Clerk. We can, I think we can start at the top of the list, and go down and ask people for any changes. So, starting with the AC Healthy Homes, it's currently TBD. Member Welch?
I had an interest in serving on the Alameda County Healthy Homes Commission.
Oh, actually, I don't want to miss public comment again. Let's, let's take public comment before we have deliberation. Members of the public, who would like to comment, please come forward.
Yeah, you need to set up a condition whereby we, the public, can be heard when you're not running a meeting properly. Like, I could have yelled out from their Brown Act violation, and then there would have been a lot of anger and, you know, retribution, a lot of acrimony because of lack of order in the, in the room. So, I mean, last time, thankfully, the city clerk spoke up. I was going to speak up, but she, luckily, she did, and, but this time, you caught it. I mean, so, I mean, either the city clerk speaks up when there's, when there's not proper, the meeting is not being properly run, I would appreciate if she does. the meeting is not being properly run, I would appreciate if she does that, continues to do that every time, or we, I guess I'll start yelling from the, from the peanut gallery, Brown Act violation, I guess, or public comment, or whatever. I mean, I guess that's where, when I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to self, self-police. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? I'll bring this back for our deliberation. So Member Welch, you were talking about the AC Healthy Homes.
Yes, I had an interest in serving.
Okay, I'll pencil your name in. For the mayor's...
If we're interested, should we just raise our hand? I'll also indicate interest in that, in Alameda County Healthy Homes.
Would you be okay as an alternate?
Should, are we going to decide on each one as we go? Is that your preference?
Oh, I, I think I'll just, we can just gauge interest right now.
I'm okay as alternate.
Okay. Unless we have something contested, I don't think we need to vote just yet. Mayor's Conference.
I hope you'll take that over from me.
Yes, I, I'll propose myself as the member and Vice Mayor as my alternate.
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes.
Are there any conferences to attend, or are those over on this, on AC Mayor's Conference?
We just had one for January last week, so the next one will be in February.
So this is every, every month? This is a monthly?
This is a monthly rotation, yes.
Thank you.
AC Source Reduction and Recycling Board, I'm okay staying on that unless somebody else has a strong interest.
I do have a strong interest in this, because it's part of the sustainability, and we've been doing many things at the Watergate regarding recycling, so I would not mind at all serving on AC Source Reduction Recycling, because I am your alternate on stop-waste, and I think that's part of the stop-waste.
Yes, it is. It goes hand in hand with the AC Waste Management Authority, where you are the current...
Alternate.
Alternate. So are you saying that you're interested in becoming the primary member?
Primary or alternate, either one is fine.
Okay, I'll keep you as alternate for now, but we can also come back to that one. Association for Bay Area Governments, I have, Member Welch, are you interested in continuing that?
I am, yes.
And Vice Mayor, you're the current alternate.
I don't mind, it's, it's fine.
Ava Community Energy, we have Vice Mayor, you are the member, and it, I would, Member Solomon, would you be amenable to being the alternate?
I would be, you beat me to it. Did we purposefully skip some?
Ah, no, I, I can, I have looked over the Source Reduction and Waste Management. So we have, we do have now AC Transit and AC Transportation Commission. I, I do think based on the Transportation Committee assignment, we should look to change the AC Transportation Commission. As far as the inter-agency liaison, I, I don't have any strong feelings on that. Member Solomon, and would you be amenable to serving on AC Transportation Commission? And Vice Mayor Carr, would you be okay giving that up?
I would like to serve on that, since I've served on it for two years as an alternate. That's, that was one of the reasons why I wanted to be on the Transportation, because I have made contacts there as well. So I would like to, I'd like our city to benefit from those relationships.
Seeing that you're currently serving on, as the primary on Ava, and you've expressed interest in the Waste Management Authority and Source Reduction and Recycling Board, would you be okay?
Yeah, you know what? It actually makes sense for you or Matthew to have ACTC because of the, because you're going to be serving on the Transportation Committee. Perhaps you can go ahead and represent our city. It actually does make sense for somebody on the Transportation Committee to serve on both AC Transit and ACTC. So I would be willing to give up both or be alternate to wherever I'm needed on those, if I am needed. I would be willing to give up ACTC as an alternate, because it makes better sense for you and Matthew to be on that committee, and it makes better sense for you both to be part of AC Transit, to be AC Transit Liaison.
Do I keep you as an alternate and have Matthew as the primary for AC Transit and Transportation Commission?
That is absolutely fine, unless you would prefer to do that since you are on Transportation Committee.
No, that's fine. I would be happy to have you serve there as an alternate. And then maybe I could be your alternate on the AC Source Reduction and Stop-Waste Management, if that's still your interest.
It is definitely an interest, and I would very much appreciate that if that's what we can do.
Okay. So I'm moving myself to alternate, and you would be primary.
And just to confirm, I would be the primary on AC Transportation Commission and the AC Transit Interagency Liaison Committee.
Correct.
Thank you.
So now, moving back down to ABAG, we have Courtney and Member Welch and Vice Mayor as member and alternate. Ava would be Vice Mayor Carr and Member Solomon. East Bay Sports Field Recreation JPA, we have the primary as Member Welch and Vice Mayor as alternate. Are you okay with that?
Hey, I am fine. If someone else is very passionate about that, they are about sports, they are welcome to take this, we hardly ever meet. I haven't, I think I attended only one where you were not available, so, yeah. It's a very easy committee to be on.
ECCL Governance, that's all members. The current JPA, Emeryville Oakland JPA. This is, I'm actually not sure, so the structure of this, it's four members and then an alternate? Maybe, Madam Clerk, can you clarify the structure of the JPA?
I'm not sure that I can. I remember that this is a, an odd one. Can you give us just a minute? Let me look at that.
Sure, we can come back to that one.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have the League of Cities, which is a, my understanding is comprises a annual trip, and then the annual conference, and then there's the League of California Cities, East Bay Division.
I have been to both, and I don't mind taking on both. League of Cities, that annual conference, I have, I have been to and have been received very positively. So same with the League of East Bay Division. Unless, Member Welch, if you have a strong interest in these, I could be your alternate, or either way around is fine with me.
I'm fine with you being the lead and remaining the alternate on that.
Many meetings are in Sacramento, whereas my family lives there, so we would be saving the city in expense. So, I don't mind being the lead.
So you'll be the primary for both of those, then?
Sure.
Okay. The next items, these are the two-year terms. We have a non-council member on AC Transportation Commission, so that's John Suther, we won't discuss that one. ETMA, we won't discuss that. And then AC Fire Advisory Commission, you're the current primary on that, Member Carr. And...
If someone feels passionately about it, that's another one that has met only once in the last year. So that's another one that's an easy committee to be on. It does meet in person, I don't mind being there because of the frequency it meets. It's supposed to be once a quarter, but I think we end up meeting only once because of lack of quorum.
Member Welch.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a suggestion, Madam Vice Mayor, with you being on public safety, I think it does make sense for you to remain on the commission.
Oh, I don't mind, I don't mind at all. In fact, it's very nice to be there. They're a great group of people.
Maybe the alternate, Member Solomon, I can add that, add you there.
Sounds good.
And then the last one we're trying to fill is the Housing Authority of the County of Alameda, current member, Member Welch. Are you okay continuing to serve?
Yes, I am.
I think you missed the AC Mosquito Abatement District.
Yes, so those are four-year terms, so former member, Bowthers, is diligently protecting us from mosquitoes for the next few years.
Bless his heart for doing that.
Thank you, Member Bowthers. Okay, so I think that covers it. I do want to know, so, Member Carr, you do have quite a few bodies, if you see any, any concerns?
Some meet only once, so I think I can handle it. If you want to be, if you want to be the primary on any one of these, maybe you can go ahead and, or appoint someone else to be primary, I'm, I'm fine with that.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure you're okay with the stop-waste work, so they, that meeting...
Would you prefer to be? If you prefer to be, that's fine with me, because you're part of Sustainability Committee.
I don't have strong feelings, and, you know, good ideas for sustainability can come from anywhere, so.
Okay, I, yeah, I don't mind being on those, but if, if you have, or if Matthew has a strong preference, I don't even mind that you...
I'm actually just noticing, I'm, I'm only on the Mayor's Conference, so maybe I should retain stop-waste.
Sure.
Okay. So I'll, I'll switch my name back and if you're okay being, remaining my alternate, I'll, I'll keep you on there, Vice Mayor.
Sure, or if you, Matthew prefers that, that's fine, too.
Matthew, do you have strong feelings about stop-waste being the alternate?
I'm happy to be the alternate, if, if Vice Mayor doesn't have a strong opinion on this matter.
I am already serving on so many, Matthew, so if you prefer to be alternate, because you are on Transportation and Sustainability, it actually makes sense for you, rather than me, to be there.
That sounds good to me.
So I think we covered everything. Do we want to come back to the, the JPA?
Sure, I can read the, so it, it was created in 1992, and it's the decision-making legislative body for the East Bay Bridge Project. The membership consists of Emeryville and Oakland Planning Commissioners and City Council Members. The Planning Council is six Emeryville Planning Commissioners and seven City of Oakland Planning Commissioners. The Appellate Council is listed as four City of Emeryville City Council Members. So I think that's why four were appointed, and then there is a fifth member that is an alternate.
I see, so we should use the four eligible council members then as the primary?
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, can I also ask a question?
Yes.
If you're not going to go back through these, so the...
We can go back through them if you'd like.
Were there two people? I just want to make sure that there were two people assigned to the AC Transit ILC, because it's actually a, we need two council members, so Councilmember Bowthers and Carr used to serve on that. I only got one, but maybe there were two that were assigned.
So I have Solomon and Vice, Vice Mayor Carr.
Perfect, thank you so much.
If you want to take that, David, that's completely fine with me, because you are on the Transportation Committee, so it makes sense for you to be there.
Okay, I can step in on that one. So the, the ILC, AC Transit, will be Member Solomon and myself. Were there any other clarifying questions, Madam Clerk?
I think I've got the rest of them, thank you.
There's a hand in the back.
Lorraine.
Lorraine.
Lorraine, may I have a question? Apologies, I just wanted to double-check with the Source Reduction and Recycling Board. They technically do not have an alternate, Mayor.
Yes, you're right. So it would be the, the alternate for the Waste Management Authority.
Okay, thank you.
So are you on both of those, David? Oh, sorry, Mayor, Mayor Mora?
Yes, so I'll remain on those with you as my alternate.
Okay, only on the Waste Management. I'm just trying to write these down. So I am on AC Waste Management as your alternative. Council, right?
Yes, that's right.
Can we read them one more time, just so that we are clear about these?
Yeah, so starting at the top, I have AC Healthy Homes, Member Welch, with Member Solomon as the alternate. Mayor's Conference, the member as my, I'd be the primary, and Vice Mayor, you would be the secondary or alternate. Source Reduction Recycling Board, I would remain there. The AC Transit and Emeryville ILC Interagency Liaison Committee, this would be the member, Member Solomon as the primary, and I would be the alternate. AC Transportation Commission, this would be Member Solomon as the member, oh, yes.
Question.
Oh, yes, go ahead. There's a question?
Yes, for the AC Transit ILC, it's actually two members they need, it's not an alternate, it's two.
Sorry, I misspoke. Yeah, the, the alternate is not applicable, so this would be a Member Solomon and myself. AC Transportation Commission, this would be Member Solomon and Member Carr as the AC Waste Management Authority, I would remain as the member and Vice Mayor Carr as the alternate. Association of Bay Area Governments, Member Welch and Vice Mayor as member and alternate. Ava Community Energy, JPA Board, Vice Mayor Carr as the member and the alternate, Member Solomon. East Bay Sports Field Recreation JPA, Member Welch as primary and alternate, Vice Mayor Carr. ECCL, that's all council members. Emeryville Oakland JPA, that's all four council members. League of California Cities, this would be Member Carr, or Vice Mayor Carr and Member Welch as the alternate, and same goes for the East Bay Division. AC Fire Advisory Commission, Vice Mayor Carr as the primary and Member Solomon as the alternate. And Housing Authority for Alameda County, Member Welch. I think I covered everything.
Thanks.
So...
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the list that I just went through with all the committee assignments.
Second.
Public comment.
I thought we did public comment, yeah.
You did, Mayor. You already took public comment on the same.
So we have a motion and a second. Member Solomon. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
I'm abstaining.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Item 13 is Department Head Reports.
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chad Smalley, Community Development Director. I just wanted to point out that the Planning Commission meeting that had been scheduled for Thursday, this Thursday, the 23rd, has been canceled due to the applicant's withdrawal of the only substantive item we had agendized for that meeting. That was the Tesla Collision Center that was proposed at 1295 67th Street. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Smalley. Item 14, Future Agenda Item Requests from Councilmembers. Member Pryforce?
So, I have mentioned in previous Future Agenda Items, which went to the City Attorney, and, and I was asked to see what would happen with this, but this is around algorithmic software used to set rents. The City of San Francisco passed such a ban on algorithmic software. The City of Philadelphia passed the ban. New Jersey is becoming the first state to pass, to pass a ban. And Cities of San Diego and San Jose are also passing bans. And so, I would like, and Philadelphia was actually a 17 to zero on the City Council. And so, I'd like to bring that to this body, for Emeryville to pass. According to the Washington Post, 13 of the properties that were cited by the federal government as relates to the use of RealPage and algorithmic software are in Emeryville, which means that the software is currently being used in 13 properties in Emeryville, according to the Washington Post. And so, I'd like to advance this discussion to this body.
Is this--
Sorry, just to clarify, Mr. City Attorney, was this previously discussed with you?
My rec, Mayor Mora, my recollection of this was that there was a request for San Francisco's legislation regarding the software. I believe it was distributed to the council with the idea that if this is something the council wanted to pursue as legislation, that it would be taken up by the council by motion to move forward with proposing an ordinance for the Emeryville Municipal Code.
Can I ask one other clarifying question? Based on your understanding, it, it seems like the concern here is almost like a collusion-type price-setting, price-fixing when it comes to rents. Would that not be covered under existing antitrust or other laws?
I'm not aware that it is.
Thank you. With a show of hands, do we have majority support for Member Pryforce's Future Agenda Item? The motion fails. Any, any other Future Agenda Items? Member Pryforce?
If there's no Future Agenda Items by--
I actually have one.
There you go.
So, well, actually, I have two. One is, I would like to have a City Council endorsement for staff support, for, to provide staff support for the Emeryville Transportation Management Authority that's the, that oversees the Emery Go-Around. They have a strategic plan for autonomous electric, electrification of their Emery Go-Around shuttles. So, this could include public works support for assessing EV charging infrastructure, City Attorney's support for legal concerns, Development Department for grants and partnership details. So, this is their long-term future vision for a, the Emery Go-Around to be autonomous and electrified. So, I'm looking to see if we can have majority support from council to help them realize this through staff support.
Clarifying question?
Yes.
Is, is this something that can be raised at Transportation and then come to council with a little bit more detail about what this is entailing? Like, a study session? Because if we are authorizing staff time and staff support, we need to know the parameters of what it entails.
Yes, so the first, the first step, we, we could send it to Transportation to be worked out exactly what are the parameters and where the support would be needed. So, I, I would be agreeable to that.
Yeah, I would even be agreeable to it being raised at Transportation and brought to council if that's something that can be done. It just streamlines the process a little bit better because we have that information. Either way is fine with me.
Sure, that's, that's fine. So, do we have majority support?
To send it to Transportation?
To send to Transportation.
Yep.
My second item is a previous item I had sent to council for a study session, and this is the, a look at the, how the, a study session on the See, Click, Fix Public Works Program. And I'd like to amend that so that it's sent out to, sent to Transportation to get further details worked out before being brought to council.
Sure, another one for Transportation? Is this something, another, that can originate in Transportation?
Yes.
Completely fine with getting more information from Transportation after it's discussed there.
Okay, so this would be for moving the study session from council that was previously endorsed. This would be a study session now within Transportation, just to clarify. I see majority show of hands. Okay. Do you have a Future Agenda Item? You sure? Okay. Member Pryforce, you have an additional one.
Yes. Given the state of our democracy, I would like to bring back to this body a discussion around the Pledge of Allegiance returning to this chambers, which I will demonstrate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is there majority support for bringing back the Pledge of Allegiance? I don't see support. The, the motion fails. Any Future Agenda Items? The time is 10:05. This meeting is adjourned.